...presentation awards, item two to go first. And item two will be a presentation by Ms. Marilla Baptista. Introduction by Marilla Baptista and Charlotte Baptista, Miss Independence 2017-18. Lauren Francis, Junior Miss Independence 2017-18. Angelique Baptista, Miss Fourth of July 2016-17. And Ariana Sobravilla, Junior Miss Fourth of July 2016-17.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Marie Baptista. I am the co-chair for the Livingston Fourth of July Committee. Over the past two years, we've been diligently working, trying to get a program together for the young women in our community. And it has been successful. We have had two reigning years. Tonight, we're going to be presenting to you a few of the community service projects that we have as part of the criteria for these young ladies being representative of our town of Livingston. But before I do that, on the back counter, we do have a few things. And one of our missions is to help with our local service groups such as Livingston PD, Livingston Fire Department, but most of all, our veterans of war. So I do want to promote some of the activities that they do have going on. There are handouts for the Voice of Democracy. Those are eligible for high school students. A deadline is coming up, October 31st. So if any people in here would like to pick up an application, we do have them in the back. I also have a Young Americans Creative Patriotic Arts Awards. Another fun activity that we're also hosting is the Trunker Treat, October 31st. If you know of anybody that is currently serving in any of the branches, if you could write their name on the back clipboard, we can add them to our list of banners that we'd like to place downtown along Main Street. Any of those ideas, please help yourself to any of the flyers that we have in the back. Right now, I'd like to present Lauren Francis. She is our current Junior Miss Independence. She's going to talk to you about a program that she has initiated among our high school students and will be presenting as well as to Livingston Middle School and among our community. So Lauren?
My name is Lauren Francis, and I'm this year's Junior Miss Independence 2017-2018. As part of being Miss Independence or Junior Miss Independence, we are required to do a community service activity benefiting the community. So I thought to myself, how can I make Livingston better? What can I do to improve Livingston? So I came up with the idea, and I really hope it benefits all of us here. I came up with Livingston Mentoring Club. The objective is to begin a mentoring program that provides the youth of Livingston with mentors. Studies have proven that mentoring youth can lead to the path of success. My vision for this program is to provide a positive role models to children in middle school and high school. Positive role models can be achieved achieving high school students, college students, professionals in private and public careers. Why? Why do I want to do this? What is my goal? So for as long as I can remember, my mom has been my mentor. And every time I had a question about, I don't know what to do, or like, I don't know what I want to achieve, my mom was there to help me answer my questions. And then I noticed that my friends started asking her, well, what can I do to achieve this? How can I achieve this? So I came up with the idea, what about if I started a program to help my friends and everyone in the community to have a mentor to help them? So I want you to think about your story. Think about your childhood and your mentor. Did you have one? And how did it impact your life? How did that influence your life and your career choices? So I have some stats. One in three young people did not have a mentoring growing up. Bullying was a big problem, but studies show that girls with a mentor are four times less likely to become a bully. Boys are two times less likely. Less likely to indicate drug and alcohol abuse. Youth with mentors have a better academic performance, better attendance, and improved Who can this help? I believe this can help middle school students and high school students. At the middle school, they could be paired with high school students, college students, and alumni can provide positive examples. This encourages students to do well in school and as well at home. It introduces students to what high school and college experience is like. It helps them understand the different career options. To high school students, they could be paired with college students, alumni, and working professionals. They will be educated on the different career paths. They'll provide advice and build positive relationships. So I want there to be monthly mentoring meetings, guest speakers monthly, and other fun activities. So for the monthly mentoring activities, a team member can go with one or two of the students to like mentor them like one-on-one. College explorations online. So mentors can help students review colleges that have offering in the field and entrance, review online through website and Google Maps. Now, the high school has Chromebooks from around the web, and the middle school should be getting some pretty soon. So this would actually be, we can achieve this. Leadership discussions. Guest speakers monthly. So we can have Livingston success stories, motivational speakers, and college speakers. How can the Livingston City Council and Rec Department help? They could provide a facility for the program meetings, help market the program, help with engaging the program, provide community service hours to teens who mentor, provide co-chair with help to the program, identify mentors for youth with interest in public service jobs, and many more. So my next steps. I want to work with the high school. I want to try to get in, buy in from the administration, and to help identify potential mentors. I want to work with the middle school to identify the interest in the mentoring program and to identify possible students that could benefit from the program. I want to begin recruiting professionals from different career pathways. Start with this, I want to start with a small group, about five to 10 members, and then eventually we can work our way up. And then I want to collect feedback to determine the best approach to this. Any questions?
Do you have any questions? I really admire you for being in the leadership role, and also I wanted to give you some pointers. But keeping this area clean also with the WILDA Bateman, you know, getting the high school students motivated. This is where they live, and when they leave here, they leave, in other words, an area that makes a big difference. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you for your time and consideration.
This would be a good time for me to bring Anna Alberto.
I was unable to have the current Miss Independence arrive tonight. She is working at her new job. So I do have Angelique Baptista. She is the past Miss Fourth of July. She will be presenting Charlotte Baptista's service project in regards to the history of Livingston and the Historical Museum. And that'll be followed by Angelique, who is the past, and she will present on the Honor Right now, this is Angelique Baptista.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Angelique, and I am the former Miss Livingston. And then I'll be presenting Charlotte Baptista's. And her presentation is on the Historical Museum here in Livingston, and it is called "The History That Is Ours." Okay, so her proposal is to accommodate a field trip during the spring, preferably during the year of Livingston High School's 100th anniversary of the museum, so which will be in 2024. This field trip would be simply a walk down the street and then to our very own museum. Excuse the technical difficulties, but it's all good. Okay, so the steps to get there, she will email the current history teachers along with the principal, Ms. Ballinger, to help to have an agreement of the community service project. Establish a date on which I would want this field trip to take place. Talk to a historian at the Historical Museum and the content to carry out the project. Discuss who can present the tour of the museum and to the students. Okay, so why did I choose this project? To educate students like myself about the town they live in and what it's all about. To inform people on how this community became the inspiration, inspiring place I know, I now know as home. To change a student's perspective on a small town with a densely big resemblance. I couldn't think of a better way to give back to the community than to educate students on what it's all about. Thank you for your time. Okay, so this is my community service that I've been working on for about a year now. And I had wanted to do, give back to the veterans of war. And I want to do a garden, so a garden that serves a purpose. So currently, this is the VFW Hall as we know. And on behalf of Livingston Fourth of July Committee, I will, I plan to provide a cleanup, which is in desperate need, to this hall. Okay, so to plan to beautify the VFW Hall. Like includes, it includes a sign that identifies this hall. And I want a simple garden just to make it cleaner and more friendly. And I will just put decorated rocks that will be dedicated to those who have served in the military. So if any of you know someone that has served in the military and like to dedicate honored rocks, I would be gladly to take them. And I also have papers in the back that you could sign up for those as well. Okay, so my mission, this Honor Garden will be dedicated to those who have served, to give back to the organization that has given me this opportunity many years ago. And then, thank you for your time. And these are my examples of the Honor Garden, and then also the example of what the kind of sign that I want to have posted up in front. Any questions?
So on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee and our very enthusiastic and leadership part of our program that we have for these young ladies, I want to thank you and again invite you to take some pamphlets in the back. The Honor Garden as well will serve a purpose for our Veterans Day Parade that we will also have in Livingston, which is November 11th, stepping off at 11:00. We would like to have a dedication with the posting, the identifying marker, as well as all the rocks. Now, the rocks are a $5 donation, that was one of the things, but I just want to let you know, they are a $5 donation, and they will go to the Veterans Memorial Park that we have on the corner of Park and Main, just to help with the flag poles or the holders right in there, and help beautify that corner that is dedicated in memory of those that served. So if you have any questions, please contact any one of us. You can see that our young ladies are out in the community and active. So if there are other service projects and that you might think they want added to their plate, go ahead and give us a call. We have meetings on the second Monday of every month, or you can contact me. Okay? Thank you very much.
Now with us, we have Anna Alberto. I would like to give a recognition.
Thank you, Marilla, and thank you, ladies. It's nice to see that we have young people out there really interested in improving the quality of life here in Livingston, just the way things are going here in Livingston.
Good evening. I'm Anna Alberto. A lot of you guys know me, but I work with the kids in soccer. We've been since 2012, went with this sport. I want to have my 2002s come up. We have something I want to say. First of all, thank you.
2002, please come up.
Thank you to the city of Livingston for all your support. Thank you to all the staff members that have helped us throughout the year. We want to thank especially Mayor Soria for supporting us on our play day, who we also offer to donate, you know, bike, tablets, anything to encourage our kids for the next season. We would like to take your offer because with this year, we're doing a drawing where any kid that has As and Bs will get a prize. We want to motivate the kids to keep on doing well in school. I want to thank the city of Livingston because they've been very supportive with us. Like I said, for the last three years, they've been working with us. So we have something small for you guys, and we want to give it to all the board members, but especially Mr. Soria.
Thank you for all the boys and girls. And thank you to the city of Livingston for all your support for you in LIS 2016-2017. On behalf of the city of Livingston, City Council, our presentation, thank you very much. Thank you, kids, for all that you do, and here we'll always support our kids. We always have this great kid, make a great community. So we look forward to continuing the partnership.
Thank you.
Congrats to the soccer crew, but we're going to address them.
I'm going to keep on going.
Certainly, we'll go after that. So that's one of the goals that we're looking forward to and trying to get, that those soccer clubs here. Thank you very much.
Next, I would want my 2008 and 2010s to come up, please. The reason I have my 2008 and my 2010, which is my five, six-year-olds and my eight-year-olds come up, is because this is where everything starts. What they look is basically what, it's their example. And right here, their example is our old Mayor Rodrigo Espinoza. There are many words for this man, but one that describes him all is, he's incredible. Thanks for being there for us. Thank you for being who you are, for doing what you say and you promise, for doing what you promise when you speak. Thank you for supporting us, kids, since the beginning. Thank you for all your support. Our doors were open to many places. He also helped us raise money on the four stops for our kids for the fall, which a lot of our kids didn't pay a dime. He was there for over four, five hours in the sun. And we have no worse to say than thank you. It means a lot to us. We also, he was also a volunteer. He got in the tank for our play day, which was very fun. He does everything what the community needs. He is incredible. This is why we want to give you something small, but it's small, but it's with our heart. So thank you, Rodrigo Espinoza, for all your support.
Supervisor, could you come up for him? The kids can present you up here.
Jessie, come here, over here.
Well, you know, I don't want no credit. I'm just trying to help everybody in Livingston, Michelle County, and, you know, that's what I do. And, you know, this is not why I do it, but I just love helping everybody, especially kids. So, hey, you know, let's keep moving forward, and hopefully the council will have, you know, you can support, continue to support her and all the programs, you know, for in our city. So let's keep moving forward, okay? Thank you very much.
Our last is, we want to present this to, and we wanted 2004 to stand up. And we want a special person to take it because he reminds us a lot of who I'm going to speak next. Odie. He's amazing and beyond. Since day one, we met Odie, he gave us everything. He gave everything for the kids. He said, I love kids, and I will do anything that I can do to help these kids play. As well as us, coaches, Odie shared the same story. We didn't have the opportunity to play because of financial reasons or because our parents were working. Odie is one of the main reasons why these kids were able to get free uniforms. He was, he looked, and he was one of our sponsors. He looked for sponsors for us. He did everything to try to help these kids. Kids received free backpacks because he helped us. Most important, he helped us place where the kids are now. We were able to practice in the fall so our kids could have lights. He was able to do that for us. Odie, we know you're not here today, and you're going through a hard situation, but we all want to have, we all have you in our heart and our prayers. We pray that you recover soon because all these kids, parents and staff need you. We also want to let you know that 2004 qualified to State Cup, and our State Cup is dedicated to you. Because of you, these kids are who we are, and we have continued to be a soccer league because he has the biggest heart. So he showed us that there is always another opportunity. And for us, it's important what position we get, what place we get, but it's more important for him to see where those kids are at because he helped us. We want Jose, the city manager, to receive this plaque, not only because he knows us, because he knows Odie, because he took a position, and he took, he reminds us a lot about, a lot of Odie. He's helped us a lot, and you took over, and all I can say is gracias. De parte de los papás en español, lo que usted está haciendo por los niños, no tenemos palabras más que agradecimiento. Y pedirle que le deje saber a Odie que siempre está en nuestro corazón y que gracias a él tenemos y somos la liga que somos ahorita.
Well, I humbly accept this recognition on behalf of the city for Odie. I'm especially smiling, and the back room here is standing up because actually today is Odie's birthday. So what a best gift. And I know that once he sees his video and he receives his plaque, he's certainly, you guys are going to juice him up from what he actually needs so he can get over that hump. As Anna was talking about, yes, Odie has been struggling for the last several months. He's fighting leukemia. He's certainly doing a lot better, and we're praying for him, and we wish him the very best, and we want him back as soon as possible. And again, I know he believes in the kids, and I know that soccer is what makes up his heart, and kids second and first. So that combination, what can you say, what can you do? So thank you very much, kids. You guys keep up the great work, and I know that our council and my staff will continue to do work closely with you to make this community better and help you with your recreational needs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Last, I would like to ask all the board members of the city of Livingston if they could come up and take a picture with the kids, because without all of you guys, we wouldn't have, like I said, it's not only about one person, it's everybody in this community. So if we could take a picture with, you guys could take a picture with the kids, we would really appreciate it. In the planning department, too, please.
Happy birthday, Maria. All I needed to do was sing happy birthday. I'm starting to cry. I couldn't, I couldn't speak.
Will the planning department come up, please? Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. And I really hope that we could keep on working together. Like I said, facilities is a big need, you know, even if it's even one for our kids or...
Absolutely. And as a matter of fact, whether it's the lights or whatever it is, we've been talking already with the Recreation Department, so check in with this tomorrow. We were looking at different schedules and stuff, so we'll make it work.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, kids, boys and girls. Keep up the great work, and thank you for making Livingston great.
Maybe there's online, we have kids to support tomorrow, so...
No problem. I almost wanted to do, get everybody to sing them happy birthday. It got me, man, it got me. I got, I got, sorry. So, I got, I got, sorry.
Okay, chief, we'll move on to you if you're ready. Next, we have a presentation by our police chief, Mr. Ruben Chavez, and Corporal Kane. Special recognition to Livingston business owner, Umeish Kumar Sharma, Happy Food Mart.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor of the Council, community, one of the things that we strive is to have a safe community. Anytime a citizen gets involved and helps us nab somebody who's done some bad things, obviously, we don't want to encourage it, especially if it's going to be something that puts themselves in danger, but there are times when somebody goes above and beyond the call of duty, and the case, that's the case here today. I'll let Corporal Kane describe what occurred, but I'm going to read the actual certificate that we're going to present to him. Mr. Umeish Kumar Sharma, for your quick thinking and brave actions on September 23rd, 2017, which displayed your commitment to keep our community safe. And so, I'll let Corporal Kane describe exactly what occurred.
Hello, everyone. So, on 9/22/2017, about 11 o'clock, officers were dispatched to the 140 block of B Street, which is Happy Food Mart, regarding a subject attempting to cash a fraudulent check. Upon arrival, our dispatcher was able to relay to us that the reporting party, which is the store owner, had recognized a suspect from a prior check that had been cashed. With his quick thinking, he was able to run to the door, lock the suspect inside the business until officers arrived. And Corporal Kirk and I arrived on scene. We apprehended the suspect. Through our investigation, we figured out that the suspect had 42 different aliases that he was going by within California. He was wanted by multiple cities and agencies along with the postal department. So, the suspect was basically stealing money orders and checks that belonged to residents that were dropping them off in the blue box, and he was somehow fishing them out. He has been arrested, and he's being tried federally.
Thank you. Thank you. And like Corporal said, this guy was wanted all over the state and was doing it in multiple cities, multiple counties. And thanks to the brave actions, he's not going to do that here in Livingston anymore, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief and Corporal. Mr. Sharma, thank you very much for your quick thinking. Let a thunder off the streets now. Presentation by Mr. Jackie Benwell, Parks and Recreation Superintendent. Drawing of bicycle winners from the Sweet Potato Festival Kids Zone, and award of certificates of appreciation to the Livingston High School Future Farmers of America, FFA, and the Hispanic
Before we do the drawing, you know, the Sweet Potato Festival was an amazing success, and this year, we just had an abundance of helpers. We had over 100 junior high and high schoolers come out to help do all the little things that make it special. But we have an ongoing wonderful relationship with Livingston High School, the Future Farmers of America, as well as the Hispanic Youth Leadership Council. And I just want to give them a certificate of appreciation tonight for all the kids and the dedication that they have brought to the city. So, for the future farmers, we also have a new teacher, Mr. Anthony Drummond, who's So, on behalf of the city and the recreation department, we just want to give you this certificate of appreciation for all the work and things that you did to help make the kids' zone special to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have some kids from the Hispanic, there they are, right there. So, this group has been with us, too, since the beginning of the Sweet Potato Festival. They've come to help, and I want to, did you help in the kids' zone?
Yeah.
She wants you. You were amazing. She said, "Please, have her come back when we do it again next year." So, it's really neat to be able to turn projects over to responsible people and know that you don't have to worry about them. So, I just want to say thank you, ladies and the guys, too, and for all the hard work that you did. And now, drum roll, please. Chief, you want to help me? So, the kids, when they went through the kids' zone, they were able to collect tickets to put into these containers that marked a bike that they wanted to win, so...
Do you want me to bring the bikes out first?
Well, there's nobody here to get the bike, so we'll just, and if you guys want to see them, they're just right back here behind the wall.
I might want to ride home. What's that?
Okay, this is for the 20-inch girls' bike. And the winner is Malaya Gonzalez. Does anybody have a pen? I can borrow... I got one. Okay, next, 20-inch boys. You're doing such a good job. Tessa.
Tessa?
Yes, Tessa.
Do you have phone number?
Okay, 16-inch boys. Thank you for your patience, guys. And then we have our 12-inch girls, cute princess bike.
Barack Carter, what's...
It is Gamali. Mateo. And that concludes our drawing.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Chief, for volunteering. Congratulations to all the winners. Thank you to FFA and the Hispanic Youth for what you do. Right now, I'd like to adjourn our regular council meeting at 7:49. Go back to our special meeting. After our special meeting, we'll come back to the council meeting.
Did Chief get our slide up?
Chief, can you get the slide back up?
We're coming back to our special meeting, and we got local control and policy decision up on the screen.
And before we kind of go through, from a fire standpoint, that's mainly my concern, is just ensuring that the well-being of our fire personnel and citizens. Thank you. Questions? Yes?
I just have a two-part question. One would be directed towards your area expertise with the fire department, and then the other more towards legal side of things. Do you foresee there being a lot of, you know, fire issues with indoor grows? Because it looks like we're starting to gravitate away from the outdoor grows and moving towards the indoor grows, more in line with what the state is allowing? And then, in terms of my legal question, are some jurisdictions requiring permits for indoor grows, or is that something that's essentially allowed outright? And if they are requiring permits, could those, could that revenue be used for inspections and things of that nature?
Okay, so are we talking commercial or residential?
Residential.
There's a huge concern of residential engrows. The main concern is, well, some of the concerns will be, for one, the type of chemicals that are used. Some indoor grows use like a sulfuric dioxide that is, it's a sulfuric pellets that helps with the growth process of marijuana. So, anytime that you get a sulfuric that turns into a gas, it likes to attract itself to moisture, you know, sort of like a water, which in turn will create a sulfuric acid. Our lungs depend on that moisture, you know, for inhalation issues. So, immediately, without the appropriate respiratory protection, you're going to have internal, you know, burns, basically, because you're going to be inhaling a sulfuric acid. Some of the other concerns that we have just from the structural integrity, you know, so you're going to have maybe individuals that are not holding up to certain codes. And when I say certain codes, meaning, you know, they may be cutting holes in their floor joists to ensure that they get a good growth from underneath, anything that's above a subfloor. So, they may want to plant directly in their soil underneath their home, so they'll start cutting the floor joists. Or you may see growers that will compromise headers, you know, so your structure integrity is being compromised. Additionally, you'll see where they'll start for their ventilation systems. Instead of putting in proper ventilation, what they'll do is they'll just start cutting holes through the, you know, through your walls and your attics, which will increase rapid fire spread. So, some of those, those are some of the things that, just from a firefighter standpoint, that's a concern of ours. But that's why we're constantly trying to educate our personnel. And so, when we start looking at the, just the engrows, those are, those are the concerns that we have.
Question on the permit was the question about personal indoor grows or commercial indoor grows?
Personal indoor grows.
Okay, so the personal indoor grows that now the city has no choice but to allow people 21 and up to grow those six plants inside, you, all that Prop 64 says is that a city may enact reasonable regulations. It doesn't tell us what that is. Some cities have gone, there's kind of a spectrum of reasonable regulations. Some cities just do some basics that you have to meet code, ventilation, this and that, or pretty much say nothing, allow it by right. Other cities go to the far end of that spectrum and require a permit, a fee, all, you know, inspections, this and that, for those reasons the chief is talking about, to protect the housing stock, to prevent, you know, health and safety problems. One of those cities is Fontana, down in Southern California, they're being sued right now by the ACLU that's claiming, "Those aren't reasonable. You can't charge $400 and make me go through all these hoops because now I can't grow my marijuana." So, the question of what's reasonable is kind of being fought over right now. So, that would be something for the city to consider with, that you have to allow the indoor, you may have, you may allow reasonable regs. How far you take those is up to the city and the risk they're willing to take. But, you know, that's the question that'll be weighed on the personal cultivation, is do you want to continue to allow any outside or push it all inside? And what does that, what does that mean? If you allow some people to go outside with their two plants, does that mean maybe they won't grow inside? I don't know. So, they are allowed to grow inside no matter what, though.
You have a question, Mr.?
Yeah, into my head a question just proved. Okay, so I know the city cannot prohibit the six plants indoor. Can a landlord prohibit the plants indoors?
Yes, landowners, property owners, landlords can definitely prohibit tenants from growing on their property if they don't want to, inside and out. The city just can't enact a law that says you can't grow inside.
Could the city enact a permitting process that would require either proof that you are the original landowner or the landowner or permission of the landlord?
Yes, that would be an option.
Okay, whether it's the policy right now, or does the city, Livingston have a policy, in regards how many plans you can have, and also, do those people have a doctor's prescription to have six plants in the home?
Well, right now, the current law for the city, as far as what it has in the books, it has no cultivation indoor or outdoors, except for two plants outdoors. However, as we've mentioned, Prop 64 changed that. So, what Prop 64 said is, well, now, if you're 21 and over, you can grow six plants indoors. So, right now, the state of the law for the city is six plants indoors because you can't prevent that according to Prop 64, and also, if you're 21 and over, and the two plants outdoors, for medical purposes only.
So, you would need that card if you're growing the two outdoors, but you don't need the medical card to do the six indoor if you're 21?
The reason I ask that question because when I went to the county and I did speak up on it, the board of supervisors, and because you got state law and you got federal law, okay? So, now, it comes down to the local level to see what provisions or policies you would have.
No, completely understood. And under federal law, obviously, you know, a lot of folks are still saying, "A federal law, it's illegal." Prop 64 here in California has said six plants indoors. The city can't stop it. They can impose reasonable regulations, but you can't stop six plants, if 21 and over, from growing six plants indoors.
Answering your original question through the chair, just from the neighbors that we mentioned earlier, over in Riverbank, they are doing a permitting process if you are to grow indoors. It's a matter of right, but they're still establishing certain safety precautions you must take if you're going to grow indoors. must take if you're going to grow indoors, which I think should be something we consider.
And just... That's going to be... And that gets a lot of attention. I know right now... That'll be the next slide. I know we're going to talk specifically about where the city wants to go with the residential grows, with the personal grows. Personal cultivation, we'll talk about that at the next slide. But Councilman McCabe is absolutely correct. As Kate was saying, yes, you can have a permit. Regional regulations, absolutely. And as I mentioned at the last council meeting, we do have an ordinance teed up with the reasonable regulations in there as far as different reasonable regulations for indoor grows for those six plants. We will be bringing that to the council and, well, the planning commission will see it first.
Got it. Under the... Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. I was discussing with Commissioner Marty Mendoza. What is the definition of indoor? And does that include, you know, greenhouses?
So it didn't... When they say the city can't prohibit someone from growing their six plants indoors, it's inside a private residence or an accessory structure to a private residence?
Understood.
Yeah. So it doesn't... Yeah, so, yes.
Like a detached garage or a...
Yeah. But it needs to be... Yeah, so it could be a detached garage, an accessory structure to that private residence, which might be preferred for health and safety reasons.
Understood.
But that's where the reasonable regulations come in as far as what if you're growing, you know, you're looking at electrical, you're looking at the fire code, you're looking at different regulations, making sure folks that are growing indoors, whatever that indoors looks like, that they're following a certain rules. You could definitely do that. And that's what we're planning to bring for the city, that way to look at different regulations.
Understood. So it sounds like a little bit of a gray area. Which structures are considered indoor? Is the definition pretty certain?
No, it's established. It's set up in the code and in the state law and the city could just mirror that, you know?
Understood. Thanks.
And we'll definitely get into the discussion regarding the still keeping the two plants outside, outdoors. If it's okay, Mayor, if we go forward with possibly going down the list of commercial. And again, this is just commercial activities, right? Commercial uses of cannabis. We'll talk about the folks growing it at home next. Just going down the list and asking for direction. And Mayor, this is completely up to you whether you would like the process for the planning commission to provide comments first and come back to the council for each use. Completely up to you. The first on the list is cultivation. And you see, we split cultivation between outdoor and indoor. And remember, there is, going back to that chart, remember when we talked about the commercial uses, there's the mixed store... Mixed use, sorry. Mixed light, which combines. But really, we wanted to talk about first outdoor. So cultivation, here are the folks that are growing cultivation, that are growing plants, that are growing cannabis for commercial purposes. Usually you see these folks in industrial areas. Sometimes it's a big warehouse, the big industrial area, and they're doing cultivation. You have them even racks of plants, whether they're growing the small plants or whatnot. The... I'm sorry, I was talking about indoor. Yeah, let's... Sorry, let me go down my list. Outdoor. Outdoor is exactly what it sounds like. It's outdoor, outside cultivation. That's something that hasn't gotten a lot of traction, other than in some places where there's rural kind of areas, big parcels that they're allowing them to grow small portions of or small numbers of plants or square feet. How does the city feel about outdoor cultivation? Again, plants outside.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I can't speak for the whole commission, but I just feel outdoor should be a no.
Outdoor, you'd have to worry about the smells and you guys are... The law states that you can't have it by schools. Okay, the winds around here, we do have winds. I mean, the smell would be all over, so, you know, that'd be a big concern.
Yeah, like the other commissioners said, I can only speak for myself, but I think outdoors is more... Would be more appropriate in a rural setting, not necessarily in a city setting, just because it's not necessarily the most compatible use with businesses and residential zones, but some of the things these folks talked about with impacts regarding noise and smells and even just from an image perspective, from a city image perspective as well. So I think I wouldn't be supportive of the outdoor grow. I think it'd be more appropriate in a county jurisdiction.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mara?
Yeah, I believe the pros and cons of outdoor and indoor. I think the only issue I think with the outdoors is it's not so much of a crime is they overgrow. I think they grow more than the limit. That's the issue. If it's two, six, whatever it is, because I think you guys get more calls for fire through indoor structure. I guess I was wrong. But I believe outdoor should be a... We should just keep it as it is instead of...
For the personal?
The personal, yes. That's my personal opinion.
When we talk about the commercial outdoor grow, we're talking about the really big ones, like the...
The people that are going to sell, not to use? So not in residential?
Not in residential, in like an ag area or whatever.
For a business?
For a business. Yeah.
No comment.
My opinion, you know, the outdoor grows, we see them in Northern California, up there in Humboldt, Cisco, and that seems to be an appropriate place. They're able to get flavor profiles from the pine trees and things of that nature, so it fits there. I don't think it'd be appropriate here. Though the smell, I'm not as concerned about the smell. I mean, I live in Livingston. I mean, I smell boiling chickens every day. And you know what that smell is to me? That's a smell of money. So that's what I think the cannabis would smell like, or grass trimmers, one of the two. But I'm not as concerned about smells. We're in a rural community.
I wouldn't be for outdoor cultivation, just like some other members of our planning commission stated, regardless of image, small town, small community, family oriented, you know, having a field of marijuana in the city, you know, so I wouldn't be for outdoor.
Thank you, Fred. I'm not too much with the outdoor grow. I don't need the two plants for medical use, but that's about it. Indoor, nothing we can much do about it. But about the smell, I mean, if the wind's blowing the wrong way, Foster Farms, it'd be smelling lots. So no, I'm not with the outdoor grow, just with our two medical.
So Councilmember, just to add absolutely, for commercial purposes, outdoors?
No, I'm not.
Mostly against the outdoor grow. We don't have... My opinion, we don't have the room. I think, you know, how are they going to protect it? How are they going to barricade it? You end up getting calls, the Chief and the Police Department, "Hey, they stole 10 plants." It's, you know, so I think it would just create a nightmare for, you know, who's going to protect it? You're going to have people that are going to want to jump the fence or break in or do whatever to try and get it. So I think it would create more of a nightmare, outdoor grow.
Okay. Now, what I was describing indoor, so as I was saying, indoor commercial grow, right? So let's not focus on the six plants indoors. This is for commercial. This is the warehouse that I was talking about. This is the warehouse with the plants inside, even with rows stacked on each other of plants growing. I think there was even a... I think a picture on one of the slides of... But it's all indoors. You know, there's a lot of different requirements as far as for indoor cultivation. There's a lot of ventilation requirements. There's odor requirements that are placed on some of these folks. But again, imagine more of the big structure, the big warehouse, a lot of times in, obviously in industrial, because that's where you would have your bigger locations like this. Maybe you could get the... And for right now, I know we have on up there, medical and adult use. So if you see a distinction between both in providing the comments, that would be helpful as well when we talk about it. But I don't know, Mayor, if we could open up the discussion for indoor, for commercial.
I will start with the planning again. We're doing indoor, commercial, we have medical and also recreational.
The first question I'd have, Chief, on your visits going around, do the indoor commercial use have ventilation that controls the odor going outside? What is your... Have you been to any... When you've been to the other states, have you been to any of the indoor commercial facilities?
I've never been to one, but I bet questions has come up and there's usually a ventilation system that captures all the odors that are going out, is from what I understand. Like many manufacturing businesses, they'll have some sort of, you know, filters, if you will. But, you know, to what extent, I don't know.
That answers that question. My personal feeling, indoor, if it was in the right zoning area, in the right security, I personally would not have an issue with it.
I think for me personally, this is kind of where it's a little bit conflicting, where your morals kind of wrestle with economic opportunity. So I think, you know, if it's in the right place, if it's discreet, maybe something like an industrial zone, like in Livingston's, kind of tucked away in the proper location over by Foster Farms, those areas I think would be more appropriate. But I think that going with a highly regulated permit, conditional use permit or something like that would probably be best and maybe even putting some limitations on signage. I know you can't really regulate the... Because of the First Amendment and freedom of speech, the type of signs that are out there, but you could probably regulate the amount of signage that can be given and even the percentage of it. And I think if you limit it enough or reduce it enough to just a few square feet, then I think that would help with the discreteness of it. And again, with having a regulated permit and to recap, something like an industrial zone.
Is this both for medicinal and recreation or just allowing them for medicinal and recreation or for recreation and not medicinal? I have to go back to Mr. Wallace for that same question.
Yeah, I think for an image perspective, I think doing with the medicinal, allowing the medicinal growth would probably be easier to justify. But I think from an economic standpoint, I think we should be able to listen to both and see what the... Because more, from my understanding, more cities are allowing more permits for adult use as opposed to medicinal. So I think there's going to be larger opportunities for people who want to... For companies or investors who want to put their money in adult use as well. So I think going... Allowing both would be okay.
I would agree. I would agree it should be... If we're going to do it, it should be both.
All right. So Mr. Wallace, answer to your earlier question, yes, there is charcoal filtration systems that they put inside the industrial warehouses. So that is one thing we could put on there to limit the overall odor or the discharge from the facility. The same thing could be said with greenhouses. We could allow positive pressure greenhouses and they can actually curtail the overall smell in those facilities as well because of their construction. Myself, I'm in favor of indoor, both medical and commercial. I want more firemen. I want more parks. That's the beautiful thing about having a master negotiator like this guy over here and having development agreements. There's a lot of things that could potentially come out beneficial for our city. And that's something we need to think of as well, is what are the things we want to see in our city? Do we want to have an updated fire station? Later, we're going to talk about volatile extraction. Well, maybe one of the requirements we put on volatile extraction is you have to be a major component of upgrading or building a new fire station. There are ways for us to put in these development agreements and these economic benefits to our city if we stay in the process right now. There's also, they're able to do donations to us and donations are enforceable by law. So part of our CUP process is what are you going to give back to the community? And they could say, "Hey, for every square foot of greenhouse you allow, we're going to give you $5." We can do the math real quick. That could be significant revenues for the city. Cities like Salinas right now get $10 per square foot. You know, one acre, that's 43,560 square feet. You multiply that by 10 and add that to our general budget, that could be very strong.
I would be open to indoor commercial growth. I think there are some benefits to that, just as Councilmember McCabe was discussing. But it would have to be heavily regulated, you know, comply to regulations, comply with recommendations or rules of fire chief and our police chief might bring up. So yeah, heavily regulated, but I'd be open for something like that. Just like Alex said, yeah, I think we do need... In that situation, I could benefit getting us another firefighter. So I would be open to that for both medical and recreational.
Well, in my opinion, I'd be open for both medical and adult use and indoor as long as... I mean, I've got to say, it's not an issue, honestly, but if there's anything, as long as regulated location, location, location is going to be a main part on my part. As long as it's regulated and complies with any ordinance that we put together. So yeah, I'm okay.
I'm against both. I've worked commercial areas and there's no way that you can 100% mask the smell. I smell, I look frequently over where I live. Nothing against that company. Foster Farms can't 100% mask, you know, the odor that, you know, that comes out. I've worked out at the Galleria and, you know, 100%, you cannot mask the odor. So I agree, location is a spot, but I don't want it in my backyard. So I'm against both.
If I could ask a related question, maybe for Jose, to refer to that slide that showed us the local landscape and showed us, you know, the different cities in our vicinity and what they allowed, could you speak about any cities that allow cultivation? Indoor, yeah, Riverbank seems to allow pretty much everything except for distribution, it seems like.
Yes, a lot of these are still in discussion. And I would say when it says in discussion for commercial uses, majority of those include the indoor cultivation only. And a lot of them do require in very, very specific zones with larger buffers, but they do typically have a lot of ventilation. I've been to grow a large indoor grow facility. I could not detect it outside, but then I have heard from other individuals that if you have a couple of them in one location, you can detect it. It just depends kind of on how much they spend on that odor mitigation system. It can get really expensive and you could require that.
So the reason for specific zoning and the buffering is, you know, smell is one reason, right? But when it comes to retail use, for example, you know, then the buffer has very tangible consequences, right? Because, you know, obviously you're limiting the accessibility to, you know, to adults and kids in school who may illicitly, you know, get cannabis, just like sometimes they can get alcohol. So are there any other concerns when it comes to indoor growth in terms of buffering or is it just the smell primarily? Are there any other kind of public nuisance issues, Chief, that you might be aware of when you're considering? You know, it's going to be kind of like a warehouse-type facility, relatively large, that does indoor growth. And I would like to compare that to another use, which is manufacturing, right? It's a similar footprint. And, you know, would you see any kind of trade-offs between the two in terms of public safety and health? and health?
Well, I think anytime you have a discreet location and you have a product coming to and from the location, you always have the risk of somebody, you know, setting up some sort of diversion and trying to intercept it and, you know, through crime, try to take the product for themselves. I don't think really there's too much of a difference. It depends on the frequency of the to and from. And I don't know if there's, if there is an issue with an indoor location, if it's very discreet and high security measures are in place. I don't know that there is that much of a safety concern.
Understood. And just the last question on this topic for me would be, what kind of requirements would such a facility place on the city in terms of water usage, in terms of any other infrastructure that we may need, in terms of, you know, dealing with, I believe our fire chief mentioned the sulfuric bricks of, you know, I don't know, maybe they're fertilizers, but dealing with that sort of waste products. Basically, what would be kind of the burden on the city on that perspective? And maybe someone who has experience in this field can handle that question.
So other cities have pretty stringent requirements on wastewater discharge and water use and all the environment. I mean, each applicant would have to comply with CEQA. So there's definitely opportunities to regulate that. And the state's regs are going to be pretty tough, too, from the Department of Food and Ag, that they'll have to follow.
So I could also tell you, I'm even looking at an ordinance we actually prepared for another one of our cities, and it has operating standards, and it goes through runoff and stormwater control, air quality and odor, energy use, hazardous materials, you know, waste management, waste, water discharge, water supply. I mean, the thought here is really looking at your regulations and addressing all those concerns, Chair, that you just brought up. Those are the exact concerns that a lot of folks are looking at this type of business, including the security. When the chief talks, there's, there are strict requirements that most folks put into the ordinance. They're different depending on the jurisdiction. But you usually see security requirements that have, you know, a security plan shared with the police department. The police department signing off on the security plans, et cetera, background checks. Again, all those things you mentioned with safety, then fire, water, wastewater, those things are addressed in an ordinance.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, with the indoor growth, there isn't any kind of a gotcha constraint or gotcha burden that it puts on the city in terms of excessive, you know, usage of water or something else. It sounds like it's excessive smell, maybe, that sets it apart from other industries.
I think any, like any other development, they would be expected to pay their way. So if there was, if they needed more water or more infrastructure or something, that's all on them, for sure.
Right, right. It's definitely on them, but I think what that would require for the city is to kind of have some sort of a long-term plan to make sure that we would be able to support that, right?
Yeah, especially with our water.
Yeah, exactly.
No, no, I see what you're saying, especially with our water supply in the past, where with our wells and water supply. I completely understand.
Can I ask a quick question? This is probably maybe Kate, because I would feel, and ultimately, probably Randy, and Randy is probably sitting there wondering about the zoning. But, you know, living somewhere at 3.3 square miles, and we don't, I don't know that we have any properties that are built now, we're probably vacant land, and we have to look at something that's commercial manufacturing based on the requirements of the zoning and based on the distances from schools and residential, things like that. I mean, we're not that big of a city. To me, commercial cultivation is probably more the larger of the buildings where you might have manufacturing or, you know, some other ones, smaller buildings. But is there even a place in living somewhere that can entertain a commercial cultivation?
Speak on that and follow up to another point. Oh, thanks. It's kind of hard to see, it's a little bit in the dark, but I put up our zoning map. And all of this gray area, now granted, this is around Foster Farms, but not 100% of it is. That is land that would be most suitable for a commercial indoor grow operation of the photos that we saw as examples with industrial-type buildings. And clearly, within the city's immediate vicinity, there are plenty of lands that could be annexed to supply that. So having appropriately industrial-zoned land for such a potential use is something that is definitely doable, it's definitely possible. And, you know, there's a process, just no different than any other land use that we'd be looking at in terms of the process. You know, one of the things that I think was touched upon when the attorneys made their comments is that, you know, this can be subject to development agreements. And so the whole issue of fire protection, you know, we would have potentially, you know, good rigorous standards working with the fire department in terms of the artificial lights and that type of a thing that is necessary for an indoor grow, but, and inspections and so forth. Through development agreement, the business would pay for that. They would provide some funds that we can negotiate for the fire department to have the personnel, to have the equipment necessary to support that. So this would definitely be on a self-pay basis if the city wanted to pursue in this manner. I think all of us on staff would strongly urge that we would enter into some kind of development agreement with a potential user so that it would cover all of those costs. We can do that at the very front end. If someone is interested in annexing some land that our general plan indicates for industrial use to develop a commercial grow, right at the front end, we could have that entity or individual enter into a development agreement with the city to pay for the cost of that processing, that annexation, that the development would be subject to pay-as-you-go fees and all those cost components. So we would get the police equipment and personnel necessary to oversee it, the fire personnel and equipment necessary. And, you know, we talked, again, city attorney talked about water, you know, that can be part of it. The good news is, it doesn't have to be potable water, it's irrigation water. So, you know, there are different standards. And so, you know, all those could be worked out through the negotiation and permitting process, subject to the decision whether or not to allow that. That's something that staff can't do. That's what we look to the city council to set the policy, to set the guidance, set the standards. The technical stuff, we can figure out. You know, that's what we do, you know? I mean, that's our jobs, we know how to do that. What we don't know how to do is take the tone and tenure, tenor of the community of what is an appropriate cannabis activity for the community. We look to the appointed and elected officials to provide that policy guidance.
I have an unrelated question. I noticed that we have a representative from our IT Support Services Mid Valley. I just wanted to know if, is this meeting being live cast or livestreamed? It is? Okay. Because I've gotten some reports that it is not live at the moment. Maybe you could look into that. Thank you. That was an unrelated question. We can get back.
I was wondering what you were talking with IT.
Yeah, no, no, no. The reason I bring that up is because, you know, I noticed that we don't have a lot of our citizens in attendance right now, but I do know that some are interested in the topic and are tuning in. And it looks like we have a comment from the public. Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it back to you, so if you would like to recognize that comment from public.
Hello, my name is Heidi Sanchez. I'm listening about the weed stuff. I do have concerns about that. I really don't really agree about the weed, the community, how it's brought today, and so on, the way it keeps being there, and being a real man, living in a positive way. I mean, at the community, I'm a two points, I'm into the rest of the problem, can be really connected to work, and so on. My concern is in the community because as a person, we want to be doing it. After the weed, if it doesn't do the effect, some of the people begin to worry, it's a lot of hearing, and then after the weed, it's criminal, they will do some killing because they are men. And then after that, they go to jail, and they go to prison. So I have my concern today, and I'm worried about the community. I think the community had to thank for today, and take this wisely, and think about the need of the nation for the city, for the people, because of the community. I think everything, they have family, they have friends, so if they live in a sick place, so if they can, I'm sure, I'm not a living community, so if we keep doing, then we can pay for that. So I don't know. I don't know, I'm sorry for everything that I did, the community, for the kids, for the people, and we know some people are in there as well, that they have been there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, okay, so we've covered cultivation, and now manufacturing. And I know, Councilmember, you brought up volatile and non-volatile as well, which has been something that many jurisdictions have taken on as far as what they're allowing.
So, yeah, we should have, on this one, had two sub-bullets under manufacturing, volatile, non-volatile. There are different permits that the state will be giving out. The volatile, my understanding, the reason it's called volatile is because it involves a process that, like other ag, oil extraction, involves like a closed-loop system that uses certain gases. We're not talking about the home honey oil factories that blow up houses. This would be an extremely regulated model, but some communities just aren't comfortable with it, others are okay with it. So when we're looking for feedback on manufacturing, we're looking for feedback on the volatile and the non-volatile type.
So I think, I think that as we're looking, again, as Kate mentioned, and I think that, I don't know if fire, the fire department has any comments on regarding volatile versus non-volatile. I will tell you that, given the restrictions, I do have some fire folks in other jurisdictions come up and saying, a lot of businesses right now that are allowed would be using more of the volatile, but they have to comply with a lot of laws. It's very much regulated, as Kate mentioned. But I don't know if the fire department has any comments regarding the distinguishing both.
No, like you spoke earlier, you know, so the, anything that's commercially poses is regulated, you know, so whether it be the extraction that's commercially regulated, it's all regulated by ordinance laws that identify a certain process that the companies must follow. The concern more so comes in with the residential, you know, that's not regulated. So obviously, we all understand the concerns with the residential usage for using and extracting, and we've seen, you know, the makeshift extraction systems that are set up in the garages that poses danger and a concern to our responders. But the commercial industry is highly structured and is highly regulated, you know, by state government, by law, that identifies exactly what they can and can't do. So with our, you know, if the city opts to go down, utilize, or if the city opts to allow it to happen, we could, like I said before, maybe look at how often we do inspections to make sure that they're following those regulations that are put in place.
And I don't know if there's any comments from the, from the Planning Commission?
I just have a quick comment on something that was actually discussed during the last city council meeting, when the League of Cities presenter came up. He mentioned that retail can get that special local city tax, but that medical dispensaries could not. Does the same apply for manufacturing and for indoor grows?
So, so the only, there's a common misconception about this one. So a city can do what's called a grocery sheets tax, which is not a sales or use tax, and that can be collected from all of these types of businesses.
Including the medical?
Including the medical. Medical, marijuana, medical cannabis sales and all of those businesses will only be exempt from sales and use taxes. So they'll still have to pay the, you know, the medical retail's still going to have to pay the 15% excise tax the state's charging. Cultivators, medical are still going to have to pay the 9.25 or whatever it is per, you know, per ounce of flour. Those all apply to medical. The only ones that don't are the sales and use tax. So if a city wants to do a tax, we always advise, hey, do a grocery sheets tax, because that'll count on everybody.
And in regards to manufacturing, I see it somewhat synonymous as the indoor grow. So I would put that in the same category for me, and I think, again, an industrial zone would probably be appropriate for that as well. And just kind of moving forward, because I know there's kind of a sense of urgency. For me personally, the sense of urgency really comes on trying to capture some of these economic opportunities. And I think those really come in with these large investors in the, for manufacturing and for indoor grows. Don't necessarily have that same sense of urgency for what we're going to talk about next, which would be retail. So, I mean, that would be, in terms of moving forward, I mean, from a personal standpoint, I think narrowing the focus in the indoor grow and manufacturing, I think would kind of help us be more resourceful with our time.
I had one comment, and just to go off of what Frankie just mentioned about manufacturing, there being a larger economic opportunity, I believe, compared to just indoor cultivation, for example. And I would kind of rely on some of our council members who might have experience, or any of our commissioners, who would have experience to kind of paint a picture of what it might look like in Livingston if one of these scenarios is allowed, and what that opportunity would look like. And one comment I would make about volatile versus non-volatile is I think many cities have had to grapple with this issue, not just with cannabis, but with other industries. You know, for example, you know, petroleum and gas comes to mind. So I think as long as there are standards in place that are followed, and also from city's perspective, if we allow a large enough buffer and account for the safety risks, I don't see that being an issue. And so I think cultivation would be something that the city should consider if the city were to consider, you know, one of these use cases. And with that, if there are no questions in the Planning Commission, I would like to give it back to the council.
All right. So to answer your basic question, when it comes to these manufacturing facilities, I recently toured one over in Mossland in California. This is one that has to go through even more structure than what we would have to, because not only do they have to meet their local ordinances, they have to meet the Coastal Commission ordinances as well, and the Air Quality Control Board. Now ours would have to go through the Air Quality Control Board as well. So there's lots of regulations already in place for these specific machines. There's already codes in place, because here in Merced County, we do have extractors who extract the shells from the almonds, and the same thing with the walnuts, also lavender. It's the same equipment that they would be using for the lavender soaps that we buy at the store. It's basic manufacturing. The neat thing that you see that's real popular right now in California in volatile extraction is mobile units. So they have these blast-proof units that look like those 52-foot cargo containers that meet all the national codes to be a self-contained unit, so they can bring them in, already meeting all the codes, just bolt them to the ground. And these are extremely safe. And I met with the fire chief over in Fresno to discuss it, and Fresno- And I met with the fire chief over in Fresno to discuss it, and Fresno's another area that's really considering it because of the safety. But more importantly, I like thinking about those cities like Salinas. Salinas was able to get, give all of their employees a 3% pay raise. And we got Tony in the back there, and I have to do everything I can to keep him here in Livingston, so I think he needs a 3% pay raise. Once again, we want more soccer fields. Development agreements can make it that we, if you get a 20-unit facility, which we do have a 20-acre property right now in Livingston available, that is heavy manufacturing, we could say we want a dog park there. We can say we want something else there that will benefit the public good. So the opportunity is now for us to have these development agreements, so we can come out ahead. Now, a year from now, we're not going to have those opportunities. Just last week, over 50 municipalities in the state of California had presentations about medical cannabis. So all of us who waited till the end, potentially, we're going to lose out if we don't focus on attracting the right companies to our communities who will give us the development agreements we need.
I would be willing to entertain, or be open to both. This is the indoor grow and cultivation, and it would have to be regulated, obviously. So, you know, appropriate for that type of business, so I would be open. I think there's a financial opportunity for the city in manufacturing. I'll be open to both manufacturing, non-volatile and volatile. And again, location, location, location.
I'd be against both. I think the image of Livingston, and, you know, especially what I'm hearing the citizens, their concern for Livingston. And we had a large crowd of kids in here. I can't say, you know, hey, you allowed that here, and that's cool. They tell them, don't do this, don't do that, don't use drugs, and marijuana's been considered. Yeah, the voters voted for it, but from the heart, I cannot say manufacturing. I understand that, you know, everyone's in a financial crisis at certain points, but I think if we focus our energy on getting other businesses to come in, then we can also be financially smart, financially efficient. You know, I just went to Panda Express, and the walnut shrimp was really tasty compared to, you know, having marijuana. So I would rather see Denny's, IKEA, some businesses where we don't have to worry about our image, and whether it's volatile, whether it smells or doesn't smell, you know, teenagers boils down to ethics. So it's enough.
The next topic is retailers, so dispensaries, so focusing on dispensaries.
I don't think we need a retail dispensary in the city limits.
Personal opinion.
I think we should have a drive-thru.
I should have a drive-thru.
I think this one doesn't have the same urgency as the others, because there will always be a local market that supports the retail. So for me, I feel like this is one, we could probably take a step back and kind of see how it goes with other communities. But if there is a zone where this would be appropriate, I think kind of getting away from the city core would be best. Maybe a highway commercial zone where it's away from the city core, but at the same time capitalizes on a regional market. So, and obviously, putting all those distance requires that you talked about from sensitive uses. But that's more, I think, for long-term planning. At the moment, I'm kind of hesitant to say yes, but in the future, you know, it might be something we could entertain.
I leverage the chief's experience and what he mentioned earlier, you know, saying that the retail aspect of cannabis tends to, you know, invite public nuisance, tends to invite, you know, basically also it puts at risk and, you know, it makes cannabis easily kind of accessible to the community. And I think this is where a good trade-off would come in handy, where, you know, we can kind of keep the indoor cultivation and manufacturing that's indoor relatively discreet, and just naturally, by the way of zoning, away from, you know, kind of the site of the community. Whereas, you know, if it's going to be a dispensary and retail, it's naturally going to attract, basically, a customer base. And so I think that is definitely a lot more, a lot less palatable than some of the other options. And like Frankie said, I think it doesn't really have that much urgency, and also it might not be the best bang for the buck when it comes to cities' economic needs. Any other comments?
I agree with my fellow commissioners too. I think that's something to explore down the line, once everything gets going, if we do need it or not. So, that's it.
On a lighter note, Councilman McCabe suggested the chief put a vending machine in the police station last council meeting, and I don't think he liked that idea, so I'd say no.
You know, thank God, I was just thinking, it brings a new meaning to Red Ribbon Week, because all these years we... If I could just make a quick comment, you know, I mentioned the cultivation, I mean, to me, cultivation, you know, manufacturing, distribution, testing, they're all discreet. This is one area that I think would not be good for Livingston. I mentioned this before, about about a year ago, I was in Washington, and I had the opportunity to visit a dispensary. And I was there not as a customer, I was there to learn. So I kind of walked in, and just the feeling I got, you know, the people hanging around, and, you know, I walked in and saw this marijuana, I saw I wanted to put handcuffs on people, but I had to realize, no, it's legal here, it's legal. But I just, I didn't like the feeling there. It just, to me, it just kind of degraded the neighborhood and where was that? But it's one of those things, I think, it's going to have a certain element that's going to draw to that community. And then, like I mentioned, they had an increase in homelessness and, you know, emergency calls. I mean, they, I think in Denver, their emergency calls went up four times for calls relating to people that are either OD'd or crashed or things like that. So this is one area that I think, I think we'd be better served not to entertain.
This is probably the one area where I won't be the yes, let's do it. I think it is wise for us to take a look at what happens in the other municipalities around the area. Merced's going to allow it, Riverbank is allowing it, Series, potentially Modesto. I'm okay, though, to wait and see what happens with them. Anecdotally, from touring different facilities throughout the state, I did notice a higher rate of homelessness, or, I mean, a higher rate than us is not saying much. I mean, it's like, we see two people, we have more than Livingston. But still, it's, I did notice an increase in blight in some of those areas. And once again, this is anecdotal, it's not based in fact. But at this point, I would feel more comfortable if we do not do a dispensary, unless we do consider doing one within the police station where it's regulated there.
No one's going to load it there, huh?
No, no one's going to load it in the police station. And beyond that, though, I do think we should consider delivery services, though. You know, my experience comes from the medical world and cannabis, and there are a lot of medical patients who are homebound. And I don't think it's right to, for someone who is homebound or suffering from cancer to have to travel out of their residence to get their medicine. Right now, you can have every other prescription sent to your home, you can have your oxygen sent to your home and everything else. So I would be in favor of medical deliveries only, they're not recreational deliveries. And once again, that's an area where they would, we could require business licenses for them to service our community, and we can collect tax revenues on their home delivery.
And thank you, Councilmember, you ended up actually answering two, the retailer dispensary and the non-storefront retailer, delivery services.
Did I comment?
Yes, matter of fact, I'm, one of those, what do you call those, drug stores, what do you call them? Yeah, anyway, I have seen it right next to a grocery store where there's family, and there's people right outside, just smoking, and seeing it. And to me, it should be some type of regulation that they can, it's like alcohol beverage, right? There's being controlled. You must have the place clean and all that, from graffiti, papers and all that, and you can't have people drinking outside also, see? Well, it's the same thing, you should have some type of policy and regulations if you're going to allow those businesses to come in. So that's the only concern that I have.
Can I have you state your name and address for the record, please, sir? State your name and address for the record.
Paul H. Garcia, 16350 Silkwood Court, Delhite, California.
I wouldn't be open for dispensaries, retail. Are we answering both, right now? Yeah, okay, I'd be open to delivery, medical delivery as well. I heard from both our fire chief and our other citizen about the benefits of medical marijuana and so would delivery. Medical delivery would be, I think, appropriate. In regards to retail, I, you know, heard the concerns from our police chief, and I agree with those concerns. My experience as a social worker, I've seen that in some communities. Not open to much on the retail side, I'm still doing some more thinking on the delivery, not to concern, I mean, still like to see some more on the delivery, just, I mean, maybe I'll call it, I didn't get some talent, I'll deliver it. But at this point, delivery is still, I'd like to take some more thinking on it.
Against both, I don't think a storefront is the image that I want to see as I'm driving downtown. Delivery services, how do you really enforce that? I mean, you know, is someone really going to be honest and come in and say, hey, I need a business to deliver, and how do you know if they're really delivering or not? It's going to be, there's not going to be a sign on their, you know, Mary Jane Delivery Service, you know? So I think enforcing that, you know, has to be on the honesty of the people delivering. I don't think that, you know, they may not want that, much attention to them, so I don't see them really coming forward and trying to get a business permit. They're going to want to be as discreet as possible, but that's my opinion.
I have one quick question for the attorneys then. Is there a license required for the people that do the delivery? Say someone was delivering from Series to a patient in Livingston, does that require a special license from the city of Livingston, or does their license from Series provide? Because you're in your own car.
So the city has the right to control deliveries that are ending up here? They would have to go through Series as well? They have their business, their brick and mortar located in Series, they need a permit from Series, most likely? But they'd also need, technically, they should be getting a business license, and whatever permit Livingston would require. Currently, Livingston says, no, you can't do that. So technically, it's illegal now. It is hard to regulate. A lot of cities, when they do regulate delivery, make it easy to get a permit in their city, and not super expensive, in order to encourage the delivery folks to actually get the permit so they can regulate it and have an idea of what's going on with it. There's a third kind of category of the retail, though, which is, there's that category you're talking about, the delivery coming from an outside city?
Right, if they say from a dispensary or...
In Series, yeah.
...from a factory, from Series, and they want to deliver it to a patient here in Livingston, I'm just curious if they just put it in their car and, you know, deliver it, unless you can stop for speeding ticket, you would know.
Right, most likely, no. Yeah, it's hard to regulate. But the city could say, if you're going to be doing that, we want you to have a permit here.
Just a permit?
Yeah.
To come into the city and deliver it?
Because that could be happening now, right?
It probably is happening now.
The delivery is right now.
Yeah.
And the only reason I bring it up is because my wife used to be a social worker before she retired in Mendocino County, and she treated late HIV patients. So she actually grew six plants in the backyard legally, and then she was able to transport them to her patients. We had many fights over that, because I had 22 years in the military, it was something I was dead against. But we never had an issue with it, and that's why I was just curious if this new law addressed that in any way whatsoever.
So, meeting with Lorie Jax, who is the cannabis czar, how she expressed the future of cannabis in this state is there's going to be a seed-to-sale mechanism in place. So these people aren't going to be able to not be accountable for where they're going and where they're selling, in the future. Right now, yeah, between now and January 2nd, they are essentially operating in degree as collectives and as nonprofits. But come January, we will be able to do audits, kind of like right now, we do an audit with HDL, where they audit when businesses are buying stuff from out of state but bringing it here to Livingston, so we can make sure we get our tax revenues. In theory, we'd be able to do the same type of audits in the cannabis industry, because they do have a seed-to-sale requirement. And the, specifically, the medical ones are going to have to be able to keep accurate records of where the medicine is going. I mean, California is going to have one of the strongest regulatory forces ever seen when it comes to cannabis. So they're not going to be able to have a distributor bring them a pound of marijuana and then not be able to say where that marijuana went. Similar to our alcohol distributors now, they can't get two kegs of beer, deliver it somewhere, and not be able to count of where those two kegs of beer went.
So as of right now, I have on the council, it's kind of a 2-2 for medical delivery only. What we'll do in order to keep the conversation going, we'll draft the section for the medical delivery, and it'll be up to the council, with planning commission recommendation, to either strike it or leave it in.
Yeah, and I want to clarify my position on it. I am in favor for allowing medical deliveries to come into Livingston, but I do believe it could potentially cause a nuisance to have them located as a business within Livingston. So I would prefer to see it as just us allowing businesses, or regulating other jurisdictions to come in here to make those deliveries to patients, not for us to have 15 delivery services pop up in our industrial zone.
Same thing, perfect, thank you.
So basically, no storefront in Livingston for delivery?
At all.
Right.
Well, now, who knows what will happen to you?
Not originating here.
Not originating here, but allowing them to do business here, as we allow an alcohol distributor to deliver beer in place.
Distribution. So again, these are the folks that distribute from, basically, one user to another, so...
Licenses.
Sorry, not user, licenses.
They don't distribute to users, they distribute to licensees, so...
That's delivery.
They're the middlemen, they take it from the grower to the cultivator, or from the, sorry, from the grower to the dispensary, or from the grower to the manufacturer who needs the trim to get their oils and make their food. They just go from licensee to licensee, and similar to alcohol distributors, they're also the tax collector on this stuff for the state taxes.
Yeah, what I meant was uses, different uses.
I feel like this kind of ties in to the other businesses. If we're going to allow indoor grows and manufacturing, well, that needs to go from point A to point B somehow, so I think it would be logical to allow distribution, obviously zoned properly with the proper permit and whatnot.
So that's true, to get from one licensee to another, you would need distribution, but the question is whether we want to allow the distribution, you know, license order to be placed, to be based in Livingston. For example, it could be a distributor based somewhere else that transports from a licensee in Livingston to somewhere else or in between. I think I would like to know kind of more about the use case of distribution before forming an opinion on it, and what would be a scenario, you know, what would a distributor look like? What kind of scale? And, for example, if they're just distributing within Livingston, I'm not sure it's going to be a very sustainable model, you know, so, because it's going from one licensee to another, it's not like going from one... So because it's going from one licensee to another, it's not like going from one source to the customer. So I'm a little unclear on what the distributorship looks like before I could form an opinion.
So they're not, like you said, it wouldn't be sustainable if they were only distributing in Livingston. They would, the typical model is there's one in West SAC now, I think, I forget if it's 20,000 square feet or how big it is, but it's a warehouse, basically, where product is stored, not for very long because cannabis can't sit around for very long. It won't be a good product anymore and they move it from cultivators to dispensaries, essentially. So like any other distributor of any other product, there'd be, you know, traffic associated with that, that kind of thing, which would be part of the planning staff's job to figure out impacts on that side.
Yeah, I think that takes for bringing that up, actually. And I think that would be a significant concern for our city. I don't know if we are amenable to that kind of traffic. I think we have a desire to grow kind of organically and as it is, we are already seeing the effects of some traffic congestion on Highway 99. And, you know, I think those kind of distributorships are better suited for other regions or other areas like Tracy, for example, you know, areas that are kind of easily accessible to multiple highways. So I would not be very much in, I wouldn't be enticed about this particular option, is what I would say. I would pass it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, the only problem I see with that, if they're gonna cultivate and manufacture it, they gotta get it from here to somewhere. So unfortunately, they only got 99. So.
Yeah, I don't think the semi, unless it's a huge plant, they might not have a semi for every day.
No, it's not like Walmart or something.
Yeah, it's not that much.
Yeah, so I think this can be answered, right? Because if it's a case of, you know, a licensee like a manufacturer or an indoor cultivator in Livingston that needs to get their product out, they can leverage a distributor based out of somewhere else. And the material would, you know, cannabis would go to the facility of the distributor, for example, to Tracy, assuming there's a hypothetical distributor in Tracy or somewhere else, and then it could be shipped out. So I don't see that being a limiting factor for the cultivators to come in. Initially, at least, I don't. I mean, obviously, if there's a distributor and indoor cultivation and outdoor cultivation, that would be ideal for the licenses to come in. But I don't see that they would hesitate to come in just because we don't allow a distributor.
Well, there's one point to keep in mind on that hesitation thing there, just to put all the info out there. Now that the state allows folks to have multiple licenses and has the microbusiness, folks can act as their own distributor. So there might be a company interested in coming that wants to do their own cultivation and their own distribution. And if you all were not in favor of distribution, then that company would not come here, likely, because they want to be their own distributor. So there are models out there that, it doesn't necessarily have to be a completely separate, you know, piece of land or this or, it just depends. But there's the microbusiness license too, which is cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, all under one.
I understood. And I think to that point, I would go back to kind of your initial assessment of things where, you know, there's a desire for California to kind of help the microbusiness growth. But I think ultimately, we know where the industry is headed and it's not necessarily gonna be, I don't see that happening where, you know, it is one kind of cultivator and then it's also distributing. Basically, I don't envision that microbusinesses would be the largest sector in this. And I think it's likely, if I look at other industries, that the distributor is gonna stay separate, a separate entity, right?
Well, I wouldn't be so sure because the reason they created the microbusiness license was because that's how these businesses that are currently under the collective and cooperative model are operating now, they have to be their own distributor. So although it says micro, it's not small, they, it's smaller than some of the really big licenses, but they're allowed up to 10,000 square feet of cultivation, which is quite a bit. And they can do manufacturing at a high level and be their own distributor. So just to make sure that all that, I mean, this is how a lot of these businesses are operating now. I just want you to understand if you all.
Say no to distributors.
Yeah. You might keep out, if your goal is attracting businesses and attracting some of this revenue, you may limit your options there.
Right. And to that, I would say, I think the reason why the collectives exist the way that they do and the way that they operate right now where they distribute their own stuff is because of kind of regulatory landscape was very different before the law was passed. Right now, it has allowed a lot of other players to come in, a lot of other players who have a lot of distribution experience, for example. I think they can come in and take advantage of their experience and provide basically a product or service at a much, much more bearable cost than someone who would be trying to do everything, you know, kind of vertically integrated. So that's just my opinion. And I think the cost of having a distributor within Livingston is gonna be a lot more significant burden than just the indoor cultivation with the smell and all that. I think the traffic issues are something to be really considered because that would be a pretty significant damper on other avenues of organic growth in Livingston, you know, other jobs, other factories, other industries, and people just going from one place to another. So I would basically keep that in mind and not be too enthusiastic about the distributor. If there are any comments on the planning commission, I would like to give it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Frankie Aswell.
Yeah, I just like to respond to that. I think it's, like I said, I feel like a lot of these, when you're talking about manufacturing, indoor growth, it's all about having a symbiotic relationship. And if not allowing distribution, I feel like that kind of complicates things, especially since we don't really know or can't control what's going on in other jurisdictions. If the nearest distributor is in Tracy, then all the manufacturing plants are gonna want to go towards Tracy because obviously, economy of scales makes it easier for them to go there. So I think if we're gonna allow manufacturing, indoor grows, I think from a business-friendly standpoint, it makes sense to allow distribution as well. I don't think it'll have too many significant impacts, seeing as, you know, we already have a lot of trucks with Foster Farms, we already have kind of a truck route system that's in place for the city. And if it does become a significant impact, that would be vetted through an initial study. And then at that point, you know, there could be things that the investor could do to mitigate those traffic concerns.
One example that I would like to bring up to maybe drive this point home is, I think we can all consider Amazon, Amazon Prime. I think a lot of us use it. We order online and, you know, we receive stuff at our doorsteps, right? And I think we can say that Amazon ships a lot more products than possibly the cannabis industry. You know, some might debate that, but I think you could say that the market for ordering stuff from Amazon is a lot bigger and they distribute a lot more stuff. And I think when we realize that Amazon does not have a distributor close to the manufacturer, they have distributors strategically located. And in fact, I'll bring up Tracy as an example and Patterson as an example. I think there are certain sites that are very well-suited for being distribution centers. And I think they basically leverage, you know, strategically distributing the product. So I would just like to say that I think in the future, it is possible, I want to say that manufacturing and distribution isn't exactly co-located because it is a global world after all and, you know, we do have technologies to kind of get the product from one place to another. And I would really like to stress that, I think while we do have the truck system with Foster Farms, you know, trucks coming in and out, I would not like our city to be inundated with trucks. I would like it to be very pedestrian-friendly. I would like it to be very kind of health-oriented. And, you know, additional trucks would also cause health issues with increased pollution, right? And Central Valley being the way it is, we already have to deal with a significant handicap where we do not get fresh air as easily. So I would just like us to keep that in mind and also consider, obviously, that, you know, if we really want to go after the cannabis industry, then having a distribution center would be a fuse. But we would have to weigh the pros and cons.
One other example of that would be, and I don't know what the law is yet, if they've decided on distributors, but a good example would be Atwater Corbin Cash that does all the sweet potatoes and puts them into the rye and the tequila, or, you know, he makes his own sweet potato stuff. He cannot distribute it. He has to have a distributor, as in Bud or Coors, one of those type distributors, has to pick it up and distribute it for him. He's not licensed to distribute itself. You can buy it at Savmart, you can buy it at the one in Turlock, Bevmo, but he can't distribute it himself. And we just had a class on that last week in Atwater, City County Dinner, and he brought that up. He is not, he cannot distribute his stuff himself, so.
I'm not sure if that's because, this is kind of a tangent, I'm not sure if that's because of regulatory environment. I think that might just be because of kind of the way that the industry landscape is. You know, one example is when you try to distribute musical records, for example, right? You do need to partner with someone to market and distribute. So I think it might just be that the cost for him is too high.
In California, he has to, he cannot distribute it.
In that case, it might be, but, yeah, so I'll let that comment stand, but.
Yeah, one more comment. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, so if what I am hearing correctly is that people are leaning against having a distribution center. Okay, against distribution? How, I just want to know if you're leaning against having, or some are leaning against having a distribution center. Are you for other, the other companies that do distribution coming into Livingston to pick up the product and take it to their distribution center? And if so, would that just be a simple matter of a permit or business license?
No, we can't. So the state refers to that as the through transport and we can't regulate that. They just have to be able to come and go through the city as they need to.
So I think the short answer to your question, Catherine, is that we're okay with another distributor coming out of town to pick up the product and deliver it to its destination.
Just to add one quick comment, I just see distribution as a trucking company and I think now allowing, you know, distribution for this would be like now allowing distribution for Amazon or UPS or, I mean, those are job creators, they're good-paying jobs, good for the community. So I don't, if you say no to this, then you'd have to say no to any other type of distribution company out there personally, if we're just talking about air quality impacts and traffic impacts, so. Those are just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I would have the same reservations if UPS wants to open up a distribution center here. I think Livingston has a lot better opportunity to distinguish itself in other ways, in other industries and businesses. I think that. Okay, we'll pass it on back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I'm not a narco by any means, but I'll let you know right now that I can move a million dollars' worth of oil in the back of my Chevy Cobalt. All right? Because it sells for about $10,000 a kilo, $10,000 to $13,000. So we're not talking necessarily these huge semi-trucks that you would be thinking of. We're thinking more, what do they call those, sprinter vans? Is that what they're called, sprinter van?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? It'd be more something like of that, of that capacity. I mean, this, considering Livingston is really gonna be able, until we do annexation, probably less than 40 acres' worth of any type of business here, we're not gonna have such a huge load that we're not, that we would need huge semi-trucks to move these products throughout the state. But more importantly, it's jobs, man. It's jobs. It's more jobs, it's good-paying jobs, and we're trying to bring business, not just to bring revenues to our community, but to bring opportunity and jobs to our community. So I don't want to be anti-business. I don't want to limit jobs. And I think that distribution is a key part. And why would we want to give that money to Seres or give those jobs to Seres or to Patterson when we can keep them here local in Livingston? They might be smaller distributors than the big guys, but their responsibility is to collect the tax and to move these products throughout the state. And like I said, a million dollars' worth of oil can fit in my Chevy Cobalt. It's not, and we have the TA station right here. I mean, we are a trucking community. I think almost everyone here can talk about a neighbor they have who's a professional trucker or someone on their block. So I wouldn't want to limit trucking jobs in the city of Livingston, and that's one of our number-one industries. But I respect your opinion.
There's arguments on both sides, good arguments, but I'd be open for distribution. I think it's part of the business. If we're gonna be open to the other two things, you know, be open to this. Like you mentioned earlier, some of these businesses are their own distributors, so we're gonna, that, you know, is so important. In regards to traffic or truck traffic, you know, we're gonna allow other distributors to come to town to pick up the product anyways, you know? They're gonna have to grow up into other businesses, you know, they're already gonna be coming in to pick it up. So we have the opportunity to have a distributor here in town right now.
I'm pretty much open for both. I mean, I guess at this point, not because, and I'm thinking about it, not because we're gonna be cannabis pro or cannabis, are we gonna have abundance of people or companies coming in? Oh, I know, I know it's in because they allow you distribution or they allow you cultivation. I guess right now, it's just about, like Congressman McTays said, it's bringing the jobs. And I see it this way, if it's distribution, it's create some jobs, well, let's take advantage of it. Again, that's just my personal opinion. And again, I'm back to saying, not because we can't allow it or will allow it because we don't know yet, is that gonna make you know you have major companies wanting to grow cannabis in our city? I mean, I guess, because it's been out there already, so, but I'll be open to it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make another comment, just to answer one, your question that, or your comment, that other distributors will obviously come in to pick up the product. But I would like to highlight that they would only be picking up the product from one manufacturer, right? They're not gonna, versus a full-scale distributor where they're gonna be going to everywhere and storing the product here, you know, albeit temporarily and then shipping it out. So it's kind of like, you know, imagine, I guess, like an airport or a very busy kind of a bus terminal, right, or a station. And even though it might not be a huge kind of caravan of trucks, but it might be a caravan of vans, right? And in that case, you know, while it's kind of smaller in footprint and size, but I don't know if any of you have had the chance to visit the UPS distribution centers in Santa Clara and San Francisco. But what I can tell you is that traffic around that region, because of the trucks and them driving fast, is not really an attraction to the neighbors or the neighboring businesses. And I think those big cities can sustain those distribution centers because they're big, you know, just by the virtue of their definition. And they can have these distribution centers located kind of away from the city hub, right? Whereas in Livingston, as the chief mentioned, we're about 3.3 square miles. And so we must make a very judicious decision on how we can allocate that region and what would be the best fit. And I just don't think that the cons that come with this distribution kind of sector are something that we want. And just one final question or comment is, yes, we would like jobs. I personally think there are higher-paying and better jobs for the environment and for the individuals available. I can give an example. For example, PCB manufacturing, right? All of our smartphones and all the gadgets that we use, they get manufactured in the large scale in China, in other countries, but in Silicon Valley, there's still demand for small-scale components. And so I have a feeling that that is a possibility where we can grow jobs in Central Valley, especially in our city, because I recognize we have a very deep, hard-working, talented workforce. And so I just want to say, I think we want to go for the best. I mean, if there's nothing out there that we can get, then, and, you know, it's a dire situation, we can consider the trucking and the distribution jobs. But ultimately, why do we work? Why do we want a higher-paying salary so that we can have a very comfortable community where we can live, right? If our community where we live is inundated with a lot of undue traffic, then it's gonna negate the benefit, right? So I want to keep the character of Livingston and all the good things that the community members appreciate about Livingston, like the family town, pedestrian-friendly downtown and the ability to bike around. If that gets disrupted by this industry, then I would say we should definitely consider that seriously. that seriously.
Just in regards to the concerns about traffic, I mean, it's, we treat it just like any other distribution center. Foster Farms, they just have, where it's located relative to Highway 99, it's easy access off of Main, go take Main Street, and then go on Campbell to go north or south. So it's only, I feel like only a few roads that would be impacted. And if they are impacted, then this would be an opportunity for us to tell the applicant, hey, if you want your business, we'll obviously do a traffic study, if you want your business to come here, then you would have to widen these roads or widen the Wynton Park interchange, you know? We can use it as an asset to improve our traffic flow that we have in the city. So I think as long as we do it strategically with the traffic analysis and all those things, then we'd be able to justify it.
Yeah, just what Mr. McCabe was talking about, most of everything should be probably the smaller spinner-type vans. And I was talking to the fire chief, he says he's willing to give up the firehouse because he's got three bays. And we can just pull in there, load up. Well, actually, just to get back to Frankie's comment, if you're looking at like an all-encompass campus, if you will, for manufacturing, distribution, all that, I mean, the only place that Randy talked about was that big empty lot behind there, and it's right near the freeway. And so, I mean, that, if you're looking at a little town and you want to entertain it, that's probably really the only place that's vacant land that you can build something like that. And that would be close, probably in the backside of Foster Farms, close enough to, you know, build some additional roads to get right on the freeway right there. I don't think there would be that much of an impact.
Thank you, Chief. I'm against distribution, but this for marijuana. However, if anyone from Amazon wants to come in or FedEx, get ahold of me, we'll find room for you. But again, it's just image. So anyone out there listening from Amazon, get ahold of me, we'll find a place for you. But marijuana, no.
So the next, so the next topic should be easier, testing.
Wait, was that, wait, do we have a consensus of?
Three to one, yes.
Okay, yes on the distribution.
Yes, three councilmembers willing to look at it. So look at it.
Look at it.
And of course, this, all this is not final. When an ordinance comes, you know, the council will have their, and the planning commission, of course, with their recommendation, the council will have the opportunity to vote yes or no or modify.
Any comments on testing?
I have no problem. I think that's where the word's mentioned, drop.
Okay, it sounds like the planning commission is kind of unanimous about testing.
What kind of testing do you mean? Personal testing?
I concur with my.
Hostile type of testing. Mario.
I concur with my fellow commissioners. I think testing would be appropriate, just because they tend to be higher paying jobs. Just to give a sense of direction with zoning, if you're interested, I think putting it in the industrial zone, I think, would be appropriate as well. Not to put everything in the industrial zone, but that would be the most, I think, appropriate for now.
There are some, quite a few cities that do allow testing in some commercial areas, just because it's, can be a really small footprint. That's kind of where some of these are now.
I think we could look at regulating the actual footprint of testing as well, depending on the zone. So if you allowed it in commercial, having the smaller footprint instead of the larger kind of footprint.
Yeah, I understand that. And I know an office commercial zone would probably, even that would be fine as well. But just, just for an image perception, I think just, you know, and I still like to give businesses and enterprises an opportunity to start somewhere. I think if you're more comfortable going in the industrial zone, that'd be my opinion with zoning.
You know that building over here across the town, Brennese, we used to be at, that vacant building? Would that building be like accessible to something like this, like a big company coming in and moving into that area? Because it's, isn't it an industrial facility right there?
Yeah, it's in the industrial zone, but that's Cobalt isn't it now?
It's not, it wouldn't?
No, it wouldn't qualify, but the thing is, it's a sweet potato shed now, so.
Oh, they didn't? Oh, okay.
Mario, I mean, I was ready to answer, Mario.
Yeah, potentially, you know, a testing facility could be located in that, that space. I mean, they would have to use their own processes and procedures and so forth, but, but from a zoning point of view, that would work. I read an interesting article in The Chronicle in the last couple of days about Berkeley is moving forward as a city in this area, and they have a very rigorous testing requirements in their city. I guess they're, they're kind of pushing ahead of the state in that regard. And, you know, that can be done in small spaces, and it does use highly skilled technicians and well-paid jobs, and, you know, there's some potential there, there's some positive benefits.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm open for testing.
Open for testing.
Open for testing as well. Yes, yes, I'm open for testing. This may shock you, I'm open for testing. However, I wanted, I would want it to be very stringent, kind of like Berkeley, you know, has to be, you know, in a lab-controlled area with technicians trained and all that good stuff.
Okay, so the last category is a microbusiness, and this is the one license that the state's going to be allowing, where you can have up to 10,000 square feet of cultivation, be your own distributor, a retail component, and manufacturing. Some cities are allowing microbusinesses kind of as they reflect their other uses. So no one here has expressed an interest in retail, so if you were to allow a microbusiness, perhaps you take the retail component out of it or something like that, and only allow indoor cultivation, since you're not going with outdoor, if that makes sense.
So it pretty much captured what you've already said yes to, but it bundles it up into a microbusiness.
Any comments on this? I guess no comments from the planning commission on this. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm open. Minus the retail. I'd like to explore a little bit more, because when it comes to micro, then it's altogether, but taking out the retail, I'm open to look at some.
Is a micro, testing?
No, testing can never be mixed in with any of those other businesses.
That's a no for me.
Okay.
And that's, it would be a three, one, yes, except no retail and no outdoor cultivation. So we'll look at that, we'll work with, with, obviously, we've heard a lot of comments about zoning, and we'll prepare, we'll be preparing an ordinance. The last topic, which should be pretty much the, maybe a quick one, hopefully, and for the record, I didn't choose an hour for the, that was just placed on there for some reason for this workshop. The city currently has two plants outdoors. Again, we've talked about, and we are going to bring back an ordinance that has reasonable regulations for the indoor grow, for the indoor six plants. We're already in the process of preparing an ordinance that's going to regulate that and provide reasonable regulations. We really wanted to come to you for direction as far as what do you want to do with the two plants that you, that the city currently allows outdoor for medical purposes? Currently, somebody with a medical card could grow two plants outside and also grow their six plants indoors, for a total of eight plants. Really wanted to come back on whether you wanted to continue to allow the two medical plants outdoors, or would you want to allow two plants outdoors for anybody? You know, everybody, including recreation, recreational or medical? Or would you just want to keep it at the six plants indoors? Of course, you could always allow more, but we're just focusing on the two plants.
Yes, planning two or?
Yes.
Okay.
Any opinions on outdoor growths?
No, I just think, I don't like the idea of eight plants. We fought it a long time with city council and planning commission debated on the number of plants. I mean, we were all the way up. Twelve went down, up and down. It was, I just think if we stay with the state, let them do the six indoor, then there's no hassle with the weed growing up over a six-foot fence, which most of the properties have, and we don't have to worry about it being seen by the neighbor, smelled by the neighbor, and getting all those extra complaints. That's just my opinion.
And I'd have to agree with Bob here. I think the six is plenty.
Well, I think we should just leave it as it is, two outdoors and six inside, or either or.
Can't do the either or, unfortunately?
Oh, you can?
No, the six, the six you have to allow.
All right, oh, okay. Since then, we could leave it as two outdoors and six inside.
I think going with the six maximum indoors would be sufficient. The only problem I have, concern I would have with that is the kind of fire hazards that the fire department talked about. If you're only allowed to do indoors, then, you know, that might, you know, be a safety hazard, but then I'm okay with doing the six minimum indoors.
No, that's a great point, Commissioner, and that's where the reasonable regulations will come into play. But what you just brought up is some, is really kind of something that folks have debated. If we allow outdoors, will people just not bother with the indoors because they'll have outdoors and it's supposedly, you know, it's obviously, you can use the sun and, you know, you don't have to use the electricity, you have your plants outside? That is, that is something that different cities have debated.
Chief, do you want to talk first?
Yeah, no, I think I mentioned this earlier. I think just to facilitate the ease of enforcement and regulation is just, and I know there will be people who need their medicine, and if we have the delivery or the option of having them grow indoors, I'd prefer just to have the one, the one six indoor plants, and it would be easier on enforcement, co-enforcement, the officers, just having it the same standard for everybody.
Hi. I just have one question. Is there currently on the county ordinance or could it be included in the future ordinance? I know that some cities have an issue to, you know, some, someone growing in the homes, they need to pass that, some kind of signage, and let their neighbors, their neighbors be aware of what they're, they're growing. Is that something, is that, is that something that's required by the state or county or individual cities, or is it accessible?
I think if anything, I haven't heard of the state requiring that that may be an individual city. What I would bring up is obviously posting that you're going to grow cannabis, you know, may be seen as also a security issue where, where now you're putting it out there, now folks know which is the house that grows cannabis, and you start look, thinking about kind of the issues that the police chief has brought up. And that's come up, that, you know, you're trying to make it as discreet, you know, even when you're allowing it outside, you can't see it from the right of way. You know, visibility is a big issue. If you're having signs out saying, I'm going to grow it here, I don't know, that's obviously for the chief to provide more, more input, but I know folks have said, you know, that may cause more of an attention that you wouldn't want to be placed on a home.
Okay.
All right, so this one hits a little more home for me than, than almost everything else we've discussed today. And I agree with Chief that it does create extra issues, and I'd never want to see people growing 99 plants in their backyard or using those little loopholes that we have seen where lots of families all of a sudden filled their whole entire backyard with marijuana. But, you know, this will be the first time I've spoken publicly about this, but in 2007, I was diagnosed with ulcerative colitis. I was 25 years old, and at that time, the disease got so bad that I was forced to wear a diaper. And I was not able to, to function as a normal, normal person would. You know, when as a 25-year-old male, it's very emotionally damaging to have to wear a diaper. Now, I went to Stanford Medical Center, I went to UCLA, and eventually, they got me on over 20 different pills to try to regulate my condition. And it just didn't do it. It felt like I was being kicked in the gut every single day. Now, soon after that, I had my county job, and then I lost my county job. And in fact, when I lost my county job, that's when I came to this community. Or before here, I was at Wynton. And I couldn't afford to do an elaborate indoor setup. I mean, these lights are very expensive for people, if you want to regulate it, for them to do it properly, it's going to be several thousand dollars for them to do a professional setup in their home. A guy like me, who back in 2010 was a field worker, you know, making $8 an hour, there's no way I could afford that kind of expense to grow my own medicine. But I was able to grow my own medicine in, in my backyard by buying $10 clones from the medically licensed dispensary called Harborside over in Oakland. And I was able to grow my medicine and, and to function as a normal person. You know, it's, I think a lot of times, we look at people and we don't realize what kind of disease or what kind of ailment they may have. We can't necessarily tell when someone has cancer or has chronic pain or fibromyalgia. But to limit our citizens the right to grow something that's going to bring them comfort or bring them health, or if there's another Alex McCabe out there, allow them to live without a diaper? I don't, I don't want to limit that. I do want to put a strict cap on the maximum, so we don't have 30 plants in the backyard. But I would like to make it so every parcel could have six if they have a medical license for the sole purpose that it's, it's expensive to grow indoors. And we are, if you look at our median income in our community, it's not high. A lot of us are just like me, who at one time are, are farm workers. And to expect them to spend thousands of dollars to grow their own medicine isn't, isn't realistic, in my opinion. So I would actually like to see us move back to Proposition 215, which would regulate and allow us to have six plants per parcel.
I would actually have it down, maybe that's six plants indoor, that's a state law, I suppose.
But state law also, it allows you to have six outdoor?
No.
Doesn't it?
Different than that. No, state law does allow medical, six outside, six mature plants and 12 immature plants.
So every city has the right to regulate outdoor and has had that right for years now, however you choose. Cities can ban it. There was a court case, the city of Live Oak was the test case, back in 2010 or '12, when they banned outdoor grows completely, they got sued, they won. So cities have land use authority. The, the medical marijuana laws pretty much originally just gave people the right to use it as a medicine, to possess it as a medicine, to be part of the, to not be criminalized for it. It never gave anybody the right to grow outside. It's only, it's up to cities.
I respectfully disagree. If you read Proposition 215, you will see that it does allow in there. It does, however, and I agree with you, that the cities have the right to regulate it. But it did make legal in the state of California for you to have, if not otherwise prohibited, six immature plants and 12 mature plants in the outdoor dwelling. And that is state law.
I think you're saying the same thing.
You're saying the same thing.
Yes, it's allowed by state law, but state law allows local control.
Correct.
So you can, so yes, you can, the council could say, take it back to the six plants, let it be there. State law says yes, but state law also grants the control, so the just indoors is perfectly legal pursuant to the law.
Correct.
This is my way to explore. I'd like to leave it the same, don't even touch it, but if it comes to preserving, keep it to the six, six indoor and leave it that way.
And no, and no outdoor?
No, outdoor. Keep it six, no outdoor.
Mr. Mayor, we have a comment.
Just one more question for Councilman McCabe. You wanted how many plants outside?
Well, you know, currently, we allow two.
Two, right. And we put some stringent controls on them.
We did.
I remember from the planning commission to the city council, didn't we put a bunch? We put some. We put some pretty stringent controls on those two plants, and I'd forgotten about that.
That, that's correct. There were, there were, there were controls on the two plants. It wasn't just two plants, however you wanted. I believe there were setbacks. There were visibility issues.
There were setbacks.
They can't be visible from, from the right of way. There were a lot of regulations on the two plants. Correct.
So that would leave, if we left that in there, then the person could have legally eight plants, six indoors, two outside, if we left it just the way it was.
That, that's, currently that's what you have now.
Now, if they got crazy and grew more, that's a good reason for the police to bust them. So, yeah, change my mind. Let them keep the two then. Be my opinion now.
Mr. Mayor, back over to you.
If, if we're talking, there's two different issues we have to consider. Public health versus public nuisance. Now, right now, we allow two plants, and potentially medical patients, if they're growing those two plants outside, would have no need to grow indoors. Growing indoors is dangerous. Growing indoors creates mold, creates problems, and someone who does not have the financial means is going to put a, I'm not sure what a good word is, hodgepodge system together. If we continue to at least allow our current regulation of two and no more than two, I'm comfortable with that, but I don't want to tell the, you know, when I worked in the fields, I don't want to tell the women in the fields that they can't have their alcohol sobs because they are now needing to spend $1,000 to grow that system in their home. I want Myabella to be able to grow her one or two plants just like she would grow tomatoes. And if she's using that for medicine, that's great. That's what I'm concerned about. And really, these indoor facilities, do you really think that a medical patient is gonna do that? Because that's not for medical. That's for recreational. So all we're doing is allowing the people who are probably gonna make this their side hobby business be the only ones who actually can grow in Livingston versus the medical patients who probably actually need it.
Just, just a comment. I, you know, I just want to voice my concerns about any outdoor grows. We've had so many issues here in town with people growing it, abusing it, and I feel, I feel for you, Mr. McCabe, and if somebody needs their medicine, I don't see any problem with somebody ordering up some medicine to their house. I mean, right now, if somebody wanted to, to get a prescription for oxycodin or morphine, something like that, they're not allowed to grow their, their opium plants in their backyard. There should be the same, same regulations for, for medicine. I mean, if it's, if it's gonna fall under medicine, it should be followed in the same guidelines. I just, it just causes so many nuisances for us at the police department. People growing illegally. I mean, like I said, last month, we had three people that were growing illegal marijuana in their backyard, and we had to have a mass amount of resources to eradicate the problem out there. And it wasn't anything with, with medical. It was just people abusing it. It's abused so much here in our town and the state. So I would be, I'm strong against anything to do outdoors. And again, if somebody needs their medicine, I would, you know, I would support them getting their medicine, but in, in, in a situation where it's abused, it just, it causes too many issues.
And on that though, if that was the caveat, where I would need to back up, as long as we can have medical deliveries to patients within Livingston, then I won't make such a big fuss when it comes time for us to debate it later. What it's about is getting the actual medical patients access to their medicine, instead of focusing on allowing, I really think a new criminal element, Chief. I really think us growing indoors is creating these new little micro businesses that are unregulated in their homes. I don't think the ones that have been growing extensively inside is gonna be the same as the medical patient who just needs something. But if we were able to, to bend a bit on allowing people access to their medicine, then I would be vehemently opposed to the not allowing outdoor grow.
I'm going to go ahead and end the special meeting at 9:46, and we will go into a regular council meeting. And if there's no issues, I'd like to go to Item 7 under discussion and potential action items.
Okay, Susan.
This will take a quick turn of it.
Probably.
You know, I kept the record. I didn't, I didn't raise someone out.
Hey, but you don't want to have the last of the cities?
It's a good argument.
Yeah, different, and I think this is what we need in order to.
No, I'm saying we tell the ground with the right path to citizens.
Yeah, we've got six meetings. You guys know the doubt. That's a wrestle. You should be.
District number 2017-1, Public Services. Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, we have Susan Medina from Willdown here on this particular item, and thank you for being so patient with this tonight.
Good evening. Are we gonna put up the PowerPoint presentation or?
Yeah, Chief, or Randy? Yeah, hold on. We'll, we'll get that for you real quick. Chief, can you help Susan on the, sorry, her PowerPoint?
Thank you for being patient. I apologize. I should have moved you up right after the stop.
That's okay. This is, this cannabis topic is, it's a hot topic everywhere. I think it was that, the CFD one, the one that you had clicked on. Yes.
That's right there.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, and thank you. Is this a pointer?
It's a pointer and a, and a page.
So how do you, how do you point?
This goes, this goes forward.
Is this a pointer on you? Oh, okay. My name is Susanna Hernandez. I'm a project manager at Willdown Financial Services. I've been in the industry for 11 years, and I've been focusing on, is it on?
Is your red light on?
Yes.
Okay.
My focus is on district administration, formations, and annexations. The city of Livingston has CFDs already in place, as well as landscaping and lighting districts. The one that we're considering today is for the formation of CFD 2017-1 for Public Services. Just to give you a little of a background on CFDs, in 1978, Prop 13 passed, which basically limited local revenue to the cities. The assessed values were rolled back to the 1976 levels, and then only, the property values could only increase by 2% each year. Then in 1982, the CFD Act was, was enacted, and that authorized local agencies to collect special purpose taxes to pay for public services and improvements. The purpose of the CFD that is being considered is to fund police and fire services, park maintenance, street maintenance, drainage maintenance, and landscaping and lighting maintenance in order to mitigate the impact of new development in the city. The law requires the special tax to be based on actual costs or any other reasonable basis. The basis that was used to come up with the rates for the CFD was taking the 1617 budget of the city and netting it out for any property tax revenue, for a total of $4,216,000, to fund police, fire, park maintenance, street drainage, and landscaping and lighting. That total amount was distributed among all the parcels in the city to come up with the proportional share of the cost of those services for the current development in the city. The rates that were developed based on, based on that methodology is shown on, on the table, where detached residential properties like single families and condos would be levied at $869 per dwelling unit. Commercial property would be 15 cents per square foot of lot area. Medical property would be 11 cents per square foot of lot area and what have you. There are three new developments in the city that would be part of this initial CFD formation. There's a car dealership, a Panda Express, and a medical property, and that new development will contribute approximately $65,000 a year to fund the, the various services that the CFD is gonna provide for. These are the boundaries of the CFD. The law does allow the CFD boundaries to be non-contiguous. And this is the close-up of what the, the properties look like. I believe that is the Panda Express. That is the medical property, and that's the car dealership. The next steps is for the city to receive the consenting waiver forms that were already mailed out to the three property owners, and that basically allows the city to have two council meetings instead of three, where you would have the public hearing and the election on the same night. After this meeting, the property owners would also be sent ballots for them to return and vote on the special tax to be levied on their property. Then the, the city would hold the CFD formation public hearing and also hold the election and declare the election results. And that's the end of my presentation.
I think you made a fine, open up to the public. I think everybody's gone on. Bring it back to council.
Are there other ways for you to evaluate how that money should be divided up? I mean, I understand using historical budgets, but it just, and I'm not kind of on my feet right now, but I'm thinking of who's gonna respond more to the hotel, or who's gonna respond more over there. And I think there's a good possibility that our first responders or our fire is going to be responding more often than not. Are there ways that we can reevaluate how we would do the split for the CFD instead of keeping the historical, the historical split?
There could be like fiscal impact studies where it's considered on a case-by-case basis, based on what each particular development is, how that development is gonna impact the city, considering how much revenue they're gonna bring in, and what the, how the use of the, the streets are gonna be impacted, and like you said, the police and fire services. But that's more costly to the city to administer, because then you would have to do that for every single development that comes in, and it wouldn't allow for a universal rate to be applied for any new developments that come in. The way that this rate structure was developed, it, it allows the city to apply a universal rate even for future annexations for new developments to be annexing to the CFD at the same rate, but it's also considered reasonable and justifiable, and that's the, the way that the industry mostly does the CFD rate structure.
Okay. Jose, so as a council, we have the authority to change what the, what the rate would be within that. If we see that historically there seems to be a very large disproportion between fire and police, are we able to allocate more as a council to fire for our CFDs?
Usually, your CFD would have a study component to it, which would say, "Here's where the money's going." I don't, I think there's more data than just historical, or actually historical usage and everything, but there's, it's not just a number of, "Here's what we used to charge before." I would assume that there is an actual data in saying, "Here's how much fire uses, here's how much police uses." We could definitely look at the study as far as the, you know, the 218 study and the, under this law, to see if we could shift stuff around, but you do have to base it on something. It's not, it's not too arbitrary.
Okay, then, then just far, as far as our discussion, gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, I would like us to see us find out what the fees would be for us to do a rate study, and to see and determine if the, if it is appropriate, that allocation and that breakup. I mean, I know that's the way we've done it since the beginning of time, but I also know that our fire station is one of the most heavily used fire stations in the whole entire county, and I know that medical is gonna be a major component when it comes to a hotel development, as is police, but I honestly don't know which is gonna be more. So I think it'd be valid to have a study, because if we're gonna have those major impacts on our fire, maybe this is a way that we could pay for an additional firefighter is with these impact fees with the CFD district.
And that's basically what, using the fiscal year 1617 budget, determine most of the revenue that would be collected through the CFD would be going towards the police services. As you can see, there's $2,750 out of the $4 million, just percentage-wise. I did an, an analysis, and on those three new developments, it would be around $65,000 initially, and 65% of that, or $42,000, which could pay for a portion of a, of a police officer's new salary, salary, would be going towards police services. So that 65%, it is going mostly towards police services.
Yeah, it is, but it's, it's from historical data. And so I just want to know as a leader, what is the, the projected actual impact? Is it going to be that, that the, the police budget does need such a significant amount more than fire, or is it something where fire should be raised 10%? I, I don't know if it should be, the impact is gonna be there where it could, should be 5 or 10% higher. I think it'd be worth it for us to find out, since we are considering different funding mechanisms for our fire station. I, I'm not trying to say fire's more important than police, not at all. I just want to do a study that tells us what we should actually expect the impact to be and where we should appropriately allocate said funds.
What's that gonna cost?
You know, if I could jump in, you know, as we go forward on this, and this is the initial formation of it and the initial development of the.
Thank you very much. Would be the initial development of the tax, but as we go forward, these come back to you every year to establish the rate, and that rate can take into a, into a, a count if down the road you have developed, you know, a differential budget so that more city funds from whatever source are going to support fire services and help to, you know, build a new fire station, get new apparatus, new personnel, whatever it happens to be. personnel, whatever it happens to be, then that higher budget amount can be recalculated so that the next year's tax rate reflects that higher fire amount. So these are not static. They do change based upon your adopted budgets. Right now, you know, the only data we have is the existing budget, and so that's what the data that was used, which is historical. But that doesn't limit you as you go in the future with differential budget allocations and so forth. So there is a chance that the percentages can increase over time.
But if we did a study now, we could accurately predict what is actually going to occur. I'm sure there are studies where we can take a look at Motel 6s throughout the state of California and similar jurisdictions to this and find out how many medical versus police calls are made. I mean, I guarantee, most of these calls are going to take both of these forces. The fire station is going to go out there on a medical, and so is the police. So why are we going to be giving seven times the amount to police versus fire? And I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not saying it should be 50/50. I'm just saying I want to work with more accurate data than historical data.
Yeah, we, as Suzanne...
Suzanne, are you able to tell us what the breakout is for other jurisdictions and if ours fall in line with most of our jurisdictions?
I did look at other jurisdictions, Riverbank, McFarland. These are just some that are coming to my mind. Tashapi, you're pretty in line. I couldn't compare completely apples to apples because your CFD is actually proposing to maintain service levels and maintenance for various improvements where other CFDs, for example, didn't include street maintenance or didn't include parks. So it wasn't completely apples to apples, but just looking at the rates, it was reasonable for all the different services and maintenance for the different types of services. I do understand what you're saying about the fiscal impact study. That's another approach that's also used in the industry. The cost of that fiscal impact study, however, we've seen doesn't outweigh the benefit because you come up with amounts that are very similar. The rates are very... it seems that a lot of agencies don't opt for that, the fiscal impact study, because the benefit doesn't outweigh the cost.
Jose, if... Now, she has historical data or data showing police and fire in jurisdictions throughout the state, other clients of yours. Could that be justification enough if we were able to compare, let's say, 10 different jurisdictions that have a similar makeup to Livingston within a margin of error, and then take a look at what the median is and what the average is, and then made a direction on percentages based on that? Is that a possibility? Because then that would be giving us a basis for saying, hey, fire needs 5% more.
You... I mean, and that would be just, that would be thinking of... I mean, there are different ways, as long as it's a reasonable study, there's different ways to justify... Which you have to keep in mind as well, that these are specific properties being charged kind of for their impact, right? Their specific impact. It's kind of like, you know, thinking about kind of Motel 6 and stuff like that. Motel 6 wasn't included in the CFD.
Right.
So it's just talking about these specific properties about what kind of, what's their proportional share. Now, if you're thinking the city spends too much on, or I'm going to say, I'm not going to say too much, I'm going to say spends an amount that's not a proportion, a proportion, you know, proportionally, spends too much on police versus fire, then you spend more on fire. That seems to be kind of a, also a judgment call of the council as far as what you're talking about, creating a study. Yeah, studies can be created like that. I know that Willdan usually does a lot of that research into their own study. I don't think it's just historical data. I think there's more that goes to the Willdan study as well. But if you wanted to look at it more, it's in the...
I mean, and I really do because, you know, when a majority of our calls are here, we listen to our staff reports every week, and we see how many calls are made for medical aid here in the city of Livingston. And there's a tremendous amount of those, and the first responders there is the fire department, and the police department comes as well. But I don't know that the budget we have here is necessarily the appropriate one, being that we have one firefighter and we have numerous law enforcement officers. I'm not saying that, once again, it might just be a 5% differential, but I would like to make sure that both of our departments are getting their fair share of CFD money. And not just basing it on historical data, but based on real data, which is great that we can change it every year. So maybe after a year, we will see the impact and do it. But if there is a way for us to do a study and to see that this is within the margin of error, that'd make me feel more comfortable than continuing to allow our fire department not to have, or not to have proper staffing levels.
And Councilmember, and to the mayor, legally, of course, we could take a look at what the parameters are and what the requirements would be. I know that usually, again, Willdan does this as far as they've created their study. We could look at how to change it, or we could look at, you know, what does the CFD encompass, right? Because even though you can change percentages, you really look at, the CFD sets out the mechanism of why are we collecting this fee? What is it going for and what is it paying for upfront? If you wanted to kind of reconsider and look at the different model of how that could be changed, we could, legally, we could take a look at it. I haven't looked at it for this specific CFD yet.
One of the key things is that, Suzanne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Jose, that is, we can't use this to increase the service level to a higher level than the city has already established. I mean, that's kind of a... Because this falls under the general category of an impact assessment. And so it's, this fee is to address the impact that this development has on the city. And it is not, we don't want it to look like or be misinterpreted that this is a way to address laps in what the city has had in the past because new development cannot, the impacts of new development cannot be used to address shortfalls that the city has from the past or from current practice. So that's kind of a type...
Yep. It would be looked at across the different CFD districts versus just one.
Randy, I agree with you. It's basically to fund the impact of new development. And council, that's a very prominent concern from council members that we've heard from the past. A way to fund any shortfall would be to do a universal, you know, two-thirds vote from, you know, the, you know...
Right. And I understand what you're saying as far as shortfall. What I'm saying is I don't know that our historical data accurately depicts where our resources should be allocated when it comes to our public safety. And what the actual impact is, is where I'd like to base it on, not based on the historical, potentially historical, I'm not saying they are, I don't know. But I don't know if historically we have inaccuracies on how we divvied up our funds. And so I'd like to be able to see if we do have inaccuracies or if historically we were not appropriately dispersing our funds the way we should and so that we could more accurately do it and more accurately value or measure the impact it will have on both police, fire, parks, et cetera.
And Mayor, legally, we could take a look at what the wiggle room there is. I know that the current studies that was done is really to just, again, continue the maintenance of those services, to maintain the levels of those services throughout, based on, exactly, based on this project, as the city manager is saying. I know that that's a Willdan bid. We could look at it legally. I have not looked at it as far as what the wiggle room is there. I know that it does, right now, it does, it is supposed to continue the level of service and make sure that these folks pay for that impact.
Now, if maybe you've, if you think the budget could be looked at, we could look at the budget again to see if maybe the 1718 budget should be used instead of the 1617 If that would contain more, you know, accurate figures of how much you're actually spending on police and fire and what have you, we could definitely look at that. Today's meeting is just, council stating its intention to form the district, and those rates can change between now and when we send the ballots out.
A follow-up question to that, Susan. That would basically mean that that number there would increase?
If your budget for 1718 increased, yes.
So that's kind of where it's a little touchy on one end, but what I was thinking is looking at all of our districts, okay, and basically looking at trying to address that shortfall that we currently have to meet the, you know, the rural needs that, or look at the rural impacts, but from all the districts, because we can't say that it's only, because this is one particular district and it's based on the development of these three coming in.
So we potentially could adjust all of our CFDs, all of our districts?
That's what we would look. Yep.
Just as long as you don't go over the max. These are basically the maximum rates that are being established for fiscal year 1718, and there is an inflator set in the rate and method of apportionment that allows for these rates to be inflated every year by CPI.
Okay.
Good.
Make a motion. No motion. Any other comments?
Motion.
Yeah.
I move the approved resolution initiating proceedings for the formation of the community facilities districts, number 2017-1, public services.
First and second?
I'll second. Okay. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 4-0.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to announcements and reports. Six supervisors gone, any state staff reports?
No.
It was like, let me go home.
Just two things real quick. Tomorrow, we have a couple of the cops, if anybody's interested, 2:00 to 4:00 at McDonald's. McDonald's is partnering with us. They have free ice cream for everybody, so come on out.
Wait, 2:00 to 4:00?
2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then 2:20, it was the drug take back day. It's a national day, and we are going to have people in our lobby collecting expired unwanted prescription medication. There's a barrel, goes right in there, and they destroy it later on. And this rate study might actually show that we actually need more than the fire department, so actually, that's probably a good idea because we'll probably take another...
No, it might, though. It really might.
Something to get something out of Chief Carter, but...
He got you.
The rate study might show we actually need more money than you, so it might go up for us 5%. Anyways, thank you. And hopefully, if you guys didn't see, Witten, Roader is hosting a Marachi Mexican Dinner October 21st. It looks like a lot of fun, and if you guys are interested, there's flyers in the back. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
We'll move on to city council members, any reports?
The Sweet Potato Festival was a great event. I enjoyed it very much. I will be going this week to San Diego to the Water Education for Latino Leaders. Their convention is coming up in March. I would intend all of you to, I would encourage all of you to attend so you can further learn more about water here in the state of California and how we can bring those concepts back home. And thanks for all the hard works, guys. It's a long night tonight.
I have no... Yes, the Sweet Potato Festival is a great event. Enjoyed it. A lot of people showed up. It was pretty much a... Nothing much to report, just I saw the back door, the back board doing the Sweet Potato line gets a lot of, a lot of work into it, man. I didn't think it did as much, but a lot of went back doors the other day with Jackie. I just saw what it really takes, so just a big kudos and thanks. She knows she's gone, but thank you.
I'll pretty much corroborate what you guys said. The Sweet Potato was a great event.
Just going back real quick. Chief, just want to further add my thank you to the explorers for helping us land that helicopter on Sunday. They assisted us, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll pass it on. And I forgot to mention one thing, if I can, real quickly, I was talking about, the council approved us to build a wall in the back of the department, I think it was in January, and it was a long process to get all the approvals, but I wanted to update you that the approval was for $22,000, and actually, after everything was sorted down, it's going to be $36,000. There's a lot of things that we have to do, required as you upgrade, that won't factor in, some media requirements and things like that, so the minds are, the CFDs are, but those are my two opinions.
I've seen one, so open and close. Consent agenda?
RAN is on the consent calendar, considered?
Routine. A non-controversial will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. This will be, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council or city manager request. Specific items, moving consent agenda, item four, approval in minutes, July 18th. Item five, approval in minutes, August 15th. Item six, approval, warrant registered dated September 29th. This is all of 2017. Move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
First and second, roll call.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
We'll go down to, back to discussion on potential action items, I don't know. Resolution approving the city of Livingston FY 1718 list of eligible projects for funding from the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act. RMA created by the Senate Bill 1, Road Repair and Accountable Act of 2017, appropriating funds for these projects in the city's fiscal year 1718 budget and authorizing the city manager to file with the California Transportation Commission the project list, budget application, and annual expenditure report for fiscal year 1718, RMA, RA funding.
So basically here, I'm the mayor and council. This particular, and for us to receive the SB 1 funding, the city of Livingston has to submit this to the California Transportation Commission, and I believe it's by the 16th of this month. So we thoroughly went through the list over and over again, and so the two that were put in there is the construction of the roundabout at Main Street, Main Street and B, that you guys are both familiar with, and then also the rehab of Stephanie. So with that, if you have any questions, we'll go from there.
Open it up to the public. Close it, bring it back to council for any questions or motions.
Salute.
I have a first from Councilmember McCabe.
I second that.
Second from Councilmember, roll call please.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 4-0.
Move on to, on a non-authorization of letter of support for the deferred action for childhood arrivals, aka DACA and the Dream Act.
Yes, I mean, council, if you might recall, I, once we heard that President Trump was going to basically roll back DACA, you know, that really had a lot of...
Trump was going to basically roll back DACA, you know, that really has had a lot of, is going to have a lot of, is having and will continue to have lots of impacts, and so there's been some legislation that has been proposed since July, and so, you know, Councilmember McCabe had talked about, you know, what can we do as a community, as a council, to show our support for the Dreamers, and to also convey to our legislators that this is the right thing to do. And by the way, Councilmember Agapal Samara is fully in favor of submitting a letter of support for DACA. So if you have any other questions, please let us know.
Open it for public comment, 10:23. Nobody coming up. Bring it back to council for discussion or approval of letter.
For those who are watching, if you are a DACA recipient, I'd like to remind you that you need to send your renewal application in tomorrow at the latest. The cutoff date is October 5th. Including the packet you have here is the resolution that was passed by the city of Oakland. I would like to see us model ours after theirs, and it's essentially a letter of support for the Dream Act, which is giving a pathway to citizenship to DACA recipients. It's, this is something that strongly impacts our community. We've had two forums here in our council chambers, and I will say, even though I've only been on the council for four years, when DACA was rescinded, I received over 15 phone calls that very day. And so I haven't seen an issue, besides speed bumps, that the community reaches out to me more so than trying to support DACA and be in favor of it. So I really greatly appreciate us coming together as a council and saying we support these youth in our community who are working hard, paying into the system, and following all the rules that we asked them to follow.
All right. I have a unanimous vote in favor.
If I may, Mayor, just as far as the intent goes, and then, Councilmember McCabe, I know you've been spearheading this, the idea here, as it's agendized, would be really to draft a letter that would be similar to the resolution, in fact, that it's going to be support. It wouldn't be a resolution, though, because it's not agendized as a resolution. It would actually be a letter. If you would think it would be stronger if the intent is to actually have a resolution, we could bring it back at the next council meeting. But if the council, if the intent is just to send a letter of support, a letter could be modeled with the, of course, the council approving, a letter could be modeled based on all the language that's in the resolution, showing the support, and signed by the city, but it wouldn't be a resolution.
I'm going with either, so.
I respectfully request we do both, because the Senate started talking today in committee about DACA. So it's very timely. I mean, I'm talking about, it happened this morning in Washington, D.C. They started doing their back and forth. So if we put out a letter first, which we can approve, that'd be great. We can get that letter sent out. I mean, we already know that our congressman supports it, but we can send it out to others in California, and to our president, and to our senators, and to other senators. Even if it's just an email blast, I think us putting our letter of support out there into the universe shows that there is a strong amount of support throughout California cities. While at the same time, I think it is important for us to do a resolution, so I would definitely request the...
All right. Do we do a motion thing?
Yes.
Okay. So that, your motion?
I move, we draft a letter of support for DACA and the American Dream Act, excuse me, the Dream Act, the 2017 Dream Act, and staff creates a resolution for us to pass at our next meeting.
Motion from Councilmember McCabe?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Cuddles?
Roll call. Roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
On the resolution, are we going to follow?
What suggestion? That was my question.
Yeah, we would follow the basics of what Oakland did, but we would tailor it to fit Livingston.
Okay.
Then that...
Is an a for you. Okay, motion approved, 4-0. Have a good night. Thank you for watching out there, if you're still watching.